You're welcome.
So we're waiting for Lin- Linda's not here?
Just, yeah, we're just waiting just for a few more minutes till we get everybody. Okay. We can wait two more minutes.
Okay.
Well, we need a quorum, actually. Actually, we have a quorum. And Lydia is on, so we've got five. We're just missing Linda. Bill, would you please call Councilmember Coach Mark, see if she's got any tech issues? Please.
I've just asked Jerry Lynn to also get in touch with her.
All right. And for those people watching on TV, all the council members that I also included at Councilmember Coach Mark, were just on an executive session call. And so now we're transferring from that meeting, and that's actually why we're getting just a couple of minutes later than the 6:30 hour. And so we're transferring to another Zoom meeting, so that's what's going on. And that's a, we have to get out of that, and prior to that meeting, the council was in interviews for quite some time, like an hour and a half, or you know, quite some time, over an hour, interviewing for commission positions. So our council's very busy.
Since 5 o'clock.
That's right. I just want to make sure that anybody watching this understands that, you know, there's a lot more going on. Hey, there's Councilmember Coach Mark.
Sometimes the transitions from, there she is. Right. Sometimes those transitions take a little longer than you want.
That's right. Okay, speaking of transitions, I will now call the regular meeting to order for the Federal Way City Council on September 1st, 2020. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right, everybody, welcome back. I hope everybody had a great August and our first meeting since, I think it was August 11th, so almost a month. So we've got a full agenda, let's go ahead and get into it. The first thing we have is I want to let everybody know that we've got two different types of proclamations in the city, and we almost always do the, you know, the regular proclamations that have the full city council and the mayor. There are some occasions in between meetings, or you know, where the occasion just seems appropriate to have a council, excuse me, to have a mayoral proclamation. And we had a Ukraine Day, let me just see here. And it actually, we had the 29th anniversary of the Ukraine, Ukraine becoming an independent nation. And that happened actually on August 24th. So I did a mayoral proclamation that was on that day. But since we wanted to make sure that we included the council on that, and to make sure that, you know, we've got a thriving Ukrainian community in our, in our city and in Eastern European community. And I thought it would be altogether appropriate and fitting to have the council do the second type of proclamations, instead of just reading the mayoral one. And we also have, hopefully with us honorary council, Council General Valeri. See if I can, I gotta get my glasses. Golo Bordero, Golo Bordero Go from Ukraine. And Valeri, are you on the, are you on the line?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Hello?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Hi there, Valeri, how are you?
Yes. Hello, Mayor, hello councilmembers. It's good to see you all, and I'd like to say a few words. We live in the time when people like never realize importance, hopefully realize importance of dialogue, and when division is used to conquer nations. All the relationships between USA and Ukraine are deep and fruitful. We can all agree that there is always a room for stronger ties between these two wonderful countries. At the, as the honorary consul of Ukraine in Seattle, I have a priority to support strengthening relationships between countries and help our community keeping its own flavor, pour into community in large and become part of it. Washington State became home to the fifth largest Ukrainian diaspora in USA. According to the 2017 data, Ukrainian Americans ranked top eight among foreign-born population of King County. And thousands of those Ukrainian Americans picked Federal Way as a city to live in, to work in, or to worship in. And that's not coincidence. Strong relationships between countries can be merely built from top down. Public democracy, diplomacy is an important aspect to have relationships between countries flourish. And on behalf of Ukrainian-American community, I take this opportunity to express my gratitude to City of Federal Way leadership for promotion of public diplomacy and all the support our community was provided until this day. I appreciate the chance to partner with Mayor Farrell, Councilmember Moore, and who did wonderful job facilitating, connecting people and helping our community. And all the City of Federal Way, all the councilmembers, to build the platforms that will promote more cooperation in culture, education, health, and business between cities and regions for the benefit of people. This will be heritage of our, for our future generations, and they will be grateful for, I'm sure. Mayor Farrell, your proclamation to declare August 24th to be Ukraine Day is cherished by our community, and thank you for it. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I look forward to continue our fruitful partnership for the benefit, for the benefit of people.
Thank you, Valeri, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Moore in just a moment, but I'd like to read our Ukraine Day that is the Mayor and Council proclamation from today's date. Proclamation, Ukraine Day, whereas the City of Federal Way in the state of Washington is home to a population of Ukrainian peoples in the United States, and whereas Ukrainian population of Federal Way has had a notable impact on the economic prosperity, cultural diversity, and education in the community, and whereas Rivni is first mentioned in 1283 A.D., 1283 A.D., with a rich historic past, is now an important air, rail, and highway transportation hub in western Ukraine, and is also the birthplace of the ancestors of the U.S. composer Leonard Bernstein, featured in his operetta, Candide. And whereas the cities of Federal Way, Washington, and Rivni, Ukraine, which share commonalities as centers of culture, education, and industry, will pursue partner-city cooperation to enhance prosperity and expand friendly relations and joint ventures. Now therefore, we, the undersigned Mayor and City Council of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim August 24th, 2020, as Ukraine Day in the City of Federal Way, Washington, and urge all citizens to become aware of the significance of this day in our city. Signed, this first day of September, 2020. With that, I would like to thank Councilmember Moore for introducing myself and Valeri, and really being a champion of Ukraine Day. And Councilmember, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is important. It's important for our community, and it's important to who I am as an individual. We are truly, truly blessed to have a city that is so rich and full of diversity from many countries right here in Federal Way, Ukraine being one of them. And I am so grateful for this proclamation of Ukraine Day as a first step forward towards pursuing a partner-city cooperation. This is important for our kids, this is important for our Ukraine community, and I hope this is important to our American communities as well. As an Eastern European myself, who was adopted from Bulgaria, you know, this, this I find is really important. It's been on my mind for a very long time, and I feel like this is a part of my efforts to give back to, to this community by enriching this community with our Eastern European country, in this case, Ukraine. So very happy to have gotten to know Valeri over the last few years. And Mr. Mayor, thank you, thank you, thank you for making the time to meet with us and for this historical, I'm going to say historical, I think this will be our third sister-city relationship that we're creating. I think we have one in Tokyo, Japan, somewhere in there, if I'm not mistaken.
Hachinoa.
Thank you.
Hachinoa, yeah.
Hachinoa, yes, thank you. And then obviously, we have a very strong relationships with South Korea, which is fantastic, and now we're adding to that list. So this is, this is about building community for all and making space available for every humankind. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you, Mr. Mayor, with my colleagues on the city council, and with the Ukrainian community to build a community for all and recognize the Ukrainian population right here in Federal Way, Washington. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Here, here. Thank you very much. And actually, I got the idea to do this, Council President Honda, at first says, hey, are you gonna, when she found out about the mayoral proclamation, she says, are you gonna read it during a council meeting? And I thought, actually, let's not just read it, let's, let's have the council in on this. So thank you, Council President, for getting me down that road. So very exciting. Valeri, is there anything you'd like to say in closing?
Yeah, I would like to express my gratitude. Thank you, Mayor, thank you councilmembers. And not just from myself, but from all our community. It's important for us to feel welcome in City of Federal Way and to know that City of Federal Way welcomes the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. And we'll be having conversations about moving forward with making sure that we've got a collaborative relationship with Ukraine and the city of Rivni. I think there was also a city in China that we were starting to dialogue with as well. So it's a small world after all, as the song goes. So thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think we need to go to Africa as well, so.
Here, here. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, think about, you know, where and, you know, which, you know, let's have conversations about that. That'd be exciting. In 2014, I had a delegation from, from, or is it 2015? I had a delegation from, in Africa. I think it was, I can't remember which country, but it's been, it's been a few years. And every once in a while, we'll get an African country that come in, that comes in and dialogues. And it is, you know, it is rewarding to hear from people around, around the world. Okay, let's move on. Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything else on that?
Me?
Council President.
Yes, thank you. I, I love the idea of sister cities, but I know that there's a cost to that, so I'd like to have further discussions about the cost of adding sister cities and the sister cities that we currently have.
Right.
And our relationship with those and building those relationships better and stronger.
Yeah, it's been a long time since we've been back there. And we need to have a real conversation about making that a priority to keep those relationships ongoing.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. We used to have a sister-city association. I'm assuming we don't have one anymore, but we might have a discussion about having volunteers discuss this whole issue.
It's a great idea. Okay. Bill, let's, let's heat that up tomorrow and make sure that we follow up on that, we'll keep you in the loop. If anybody has any suggestions on those others, that'd be good. I think fiscal impact, I think is something we should always be mindful of. And, and also, when you start a relationship, it's, it's important to honor that relationship with Hachinoa and Donghai in South Korea. So it is important to do justice to that, to those relationships. Okay, the next item on our agenda, under Presentations, is Item B, Certificate of Recognition to Sandy Sandoval for Outstanding Community Cleanup Efforts and Just Being a Good Citizen. Do we have Frank Young on the phone, and also, and Mr. Sandoval? We have both on the line?
Yes, Mayor. I've asked them both to unmute.
Okay, please unmute them. Frank, are you there?
He hasn't unmuted yet.
Can you unmute for him?
Unfortunately, with a phone, you can't do that, plus you don't want to do that from a host perspective in case they don't want you.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. There you go. Okay. Thanks, Frank. Okay. Hey, and I've got your emails, I just want to make sure you're on, because I'm going to turn it over to you in a minute. And then also is Sandy on the line, Mr. Sandoval?
He's also allowed to unmute, but has not yet.
He's allowed to unmute? I think for the phone, you're going to do star six, right?
Yes, they do. Yes, there's a prompt that tells them to do that.
Okay. Sandy, can you hear me? Yeah, we'll get the, we'll get started. Okay, well, he's working on that. Why don't, Frank, let's talk about him while he's, and I want everybody to know, okay, Thomas, while we're, while we're talking, are you going to be working with him and trying to get that result, to get him on the line?
Yeah, I've asked him to unmute, but that's not as much as I can do from a host perspective.
Okay, so Sandy, if you're listening, I think you just gotta go star six, and you could talk. Okay, let me, let's brag on Sandy a bit. Frank, you ready?
I am.
Okay. Hey, Frank, why don't you, before I just, I'll stop talking here for a second, tell me why you email, I've got your two emails in front of me, but I really, I was really moved by your emails, and instead of reading your emails, why don't you tell us, you know, what prompted you to reach out to me? And what did you notice about Sandy?
Well, it was about, it was within the last two weeks, I don't remember the exact number of days, but my wife and I, we live in Marine Hills, and we frequently walk from Marine Hills down to the Redondo Heights condominium complex, and then we walk up Redondo Way South to Dash Point Road for our exercise, and we do that three or four times a week. And within a couple of weeks ago, as we were walking up the hill, we saw a gentleman standing at a sewer manhole alongside Redondo Way South. He was cleaning away grass, debris, and brush, and there was a pedestrian talking to him. And anyway, as we were walking by, I thought, well, this must be a City of Federal Way employee or a Lake Haven Water District employee, just doing some work. The company or the services dropped him off without benefit of traffic cones or signs or anything like that, and he was doing his work. And we continued on. And then two or three days later, we were walking back up Redondo Way South again, and the same gentleman was standing on the side of the road with his shovel and rake and some other tools, clearing away grass and brush from the road shoulder. And we noticed that on the other side of the road, there was a, is a vehicle with a retired Army license plate holder and a Purple Heart license plate. And as we passed the gentleman, I said, you know, are you a city employee? Or are you just doing this out of the goodness of your heart? And he says, I'm just a citizen. And he says, I'm 75 years old, I'm retired Army, and I can't sit around the house, I just have to get out and do something. And this just struck me as being, you know, just incredible work on the behalf of a citizen. And so I asked him if I could take this picture, and I said, you know, I'm going to pass this on to the mayor and make him aware of what you're doing. And Sandy said, well, you know, the reason I'm doing this is there are some ladies that walk up this hill every day, and they pick up garbage, and I see them walking on the fogline, tiptoeing along, trying to stay out of the way of traffic, and I just want to clear away the shoulder so that it's safe for them to walk from the Redondo Beach area up to Marine Hills and stay out of the way of traffic. And anyway, I thought this was just an incredible act of good citizenship, and I wanted to bring it to the mayor's attention.
Well, thank you. And then, actually, just so you know, Frank, I don't know if you're looking at your TV screen right now, but we're, we are broadcasting the pictures that you sent us of Sandy on the side of the road with his, with his vest on and his shovel and, and in all his glory there, getting, getting all that work done on behalf of the citizens in this area. So I want to say thank you, Frank, for bringing this to our attention. And, and thank you, Sandy, for your dedication to your community and your hard work, and for the folks that you were helping, those litter picker-uppers. So it's just, you know, really, when I heard about this, I think it would just really talked about, it really spoke to me about how we're all coming together in this community at a time, at a very, you know, tumultuous time in our country, and a time in which, you know, with all the things going on right now, it's great to see people so dedicated to their neighbors and their community. So thank you, Frank, I really appreciate it. Now, we do have a certificate that we're going to be sending to Sandy, and we've got it right, got a copy of it right here, that the council, myself, have signed, and we're going to be sending it out, and we just wanted to make sure that we recognized Sandy for his hard work. And, and we didn't know who he was at first, so Frank, thank you for you and your wife's efforts to help us locate and identify Sandy. With that, do we have Sandy on the line?
He is.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
This is Sandy.
Hi there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I want to say a word that, you know, again, what inspired me was to help somebody else, the other citizens who were taking the time, and these group of people, 10, 12, they walk up and down every day and pick up the trash. And what I wanted to do was to make it easier on them. You know, I'm, they're helping to beautify the community, and I was just, they're doing such a great job, I just want to do something to help them in return. Also, I would like to say that as you leave 16th Avenue or Dash Point Road and you proceed onto Redondo Way South, the first sign you come to says, please do your part, and it shows a trash can with an arm throwing trash into the container. I'm abiding by that sign, and I really hope that other people see that sign and do the same thing. That's, that's what I would like to happen.
Well, thank you, Sandy. Thank you. How long have you lived in Federal Way?
Actually, I live in Redondo. I've lived in, it's actually Des Moines, but I lived in Redondo just three years now. But I moved here from 240th Street to Sixth Place South, right near Salty's. And it's a place to walk. If you get a chance to go up and down there, especially in the morning, and especially in the winter time, when there's a little more water in Redondo Creek. I've cleared a lot of the vegetation, even in the creek itself. And it's, it's a nice place to go for a walk. It's a little challenging if you start at the bottom and go to the top. But you, you will enjoy it. You will enjoy it.
Well, good. Well, it sounds like it's going to be easier now, thanks to you, so thank you very much.
Mayor, if I could interject one other thing, you know, that stretch of road between Dash Point Road and the Salty's area down at the bottom of the hill is really a very pristine, it's a beautiful setting. And it was last weekend, it was, it was very hot, and there was a family of five, a mother, a father, and three children. They had pulled off to the side of the road, and it was Sunday, and the temperature was, it was in the 80s or maybe even warmer. And it was so cool and shady and warm, and they were having a picnic alongside the road, enjoying that area that's been maintained by those ladies that pick up the garbage and all the work that Sandy has done for everybody.
Very good. Well, Sandy, on behalf of the nearly 100,000 people who live in this community, and on behalf of the city council that signed your certificate, we say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And Frank, thank you very much for being a, you know, for chipping in, letting us know about this, and for your, for your help in this.
You're very welcome, Mayor, and thank you for the work that you're doing for the City of Federal Way.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. All right. Thank you. That was great. Okay.
Good night.
Well, good night. All right, let's go ahead and move on to our next item, which is a proclamation of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. Council President Honda.
Thank you. Is Sally Jarvis on the line to accept this?
Yes, Council President, I just asked her.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I wish we were in chambers so we could see Sally, but I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas Public Law Number 915, signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1956, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th as Constitution Day. Whereas celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution as we preserve it for posterity, to inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life. And to encourage the study of historical events which lead to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Now therefore, we, the undersigned Mayor and City Council Members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2020, to be Constitution Week in Federal Way. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 and to reflect on our heritage of freedom. Signed, this first day of September, 2020, by our Mayor and the City Council Members of the City of Federal Way. Would you like to say anything, Sally?
If I may, yes. It's my privilege to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of Lakota Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution. If our forefathers could see us now, wouldn't they be amazed? In spite of the pandemic, we're able to carry on the business of the city, state, and country. The DAR had its first virtual Continental Congress this year. Although it was planned on short notice, it was spectacular and included keynote speeches by Lonnie Bunch of the Smithsonian and Henry Louis Gates of Finding Your Roots. I'm going to keep it short tonight because I know how difficult it can be when a Zoom meeting drags on, and I do know you guys have had a long day. I appreciate the Mayor taking the time to issue this proclamation, and Mayor Honda for reading it. We really do need to remember and honor the founding of our country. Even though they weren't perfect, I think we still have a pretty good country, and I'm proud to say I'm an American. Just one other thing I want to remind you of, which isn't so much about the Constitution, but about an amendment. This year marks the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. Thank you again for this proclamation, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Great. Okay, well, thank you. All right, and now Item D, Proclamation, National Recovery Month, September 2020. Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Jamie Lee on the line?
I'm here.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and read this now. Whereas behavioral health is essential part of one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physical and emotional. to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physical and emotionally. And whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of individuals with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the sign of a problem and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas an estimated four hundred thousand people in King County are affected by these conditions. And whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy and the City of Federway invite all residents to participate in National Recovery Month. And now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council of City of Federway do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty as na- National Recovery Month and encourage all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities and ceremonies to support this year Recovery Month theme, rising above it all, wellness, resilience, res- resilience, then see and recovery. Sign this first day of September twenty twenty, Mayor and City Council.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. And then Jamie, do you want to say a few words?
I do. Thank you. Um, on behalf of the people in recovery living in King County, the King County Behavioral Health and Recovery Division and the citizens of Federway, uh, we thank you for your leadership and support for mental health and substance use recovery and for proclaiming September twenty twenty as National Recovery Month. We also want to recognize people in recovery and our local agency partners who provide prevention, intervention, treatment and support to people and families who are seeking recovery from mental health and substance use issues. Your recognition of Recovery Month is important as we join together to promote recovery, celebrate those in treatment and recovery and continue to educate our communities about how to overcome stigma and discrimination related to mental health and substance use disorders. As we do this, we build a great quality of life for ourselves, our families, our neighbors and the community of Federway. Thank you, Mayor and Honorable Council Members for acknowledging and celebrating Recovery Month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Tran, and thank you, uh, uh, Jamie, for, uh, your work and, and for being here, uh, for your, your words tonight. So thank you. Very important. Um, okay. Update on request for proposal, RFP, a process for city joint use operations facility. We'll have our public works director, EJ Walsh. There's been a lot of, uh, there was a story in the Mirror and we've received quite a number of emails, um, regarding, uh, the status of this operation and maintenance facility. And, uh, I've asked, uh, EJ to give an update and talk about what, uh, what the, what the real status of this is. With that, EJ, go ahead.
So good evening, Council President, Councilmembers and Mayor. I'm here tonight, as the mayor mentioned, to give you a, a short update on the proposal process and where we stand. Um, so this was last before council on May fifth of this year. Um, and so this is an update on what we've done since then. So to be clear, uh, no sites have been selected and no construction has been authorized to start. Um, what has been done is, uh, what was discussed at the last council meeting where this was on the agenda, which was to prepare a request for proposals, or RFP for short, um, to be sent out to teams of architects, engineers and real estate professionals to, um, identify needs as well as potential locations. So that work was done, um, that was done by city staff. We then subsequently advertised that RFP and received responses. And at this point, we've begun to review those responses. So within the RFP, just real briefly, the scope of work that was requested from those professional firms, um, was to perform a needs assessment for sizing and compare, uh, the needs assessment that's completed with facilities of other similarly sized studies, to develop a site selection criteria and matrix. Um, so that will look at everything from environmental factors to cost to, uh, yeah, land considerations to zoning to, you know, all, all the factors that are typically looked at in that matrix. Then once that is done, to perform a property search for potential locations. Um, then to prepare a draft site layout for those sites, prepare feasibility level cost estimates for all those sites and then provide a consultant recommendation. So this is a, basically a third-party recommendation based on the above information, just purely at a technical level, um, on the, on the information that's collected. So that includes reuse of the existing facility. It includes, um, looking at Steel Lake Annex, the Property of the South. It also includes looking and identifying a minimum of three additional sites, um, so citywide. So, you know, there's, those are not identified at this point. That's the work this consultant will be doing. So the current status is we received twelve responses from teams. We've begun reviewing those responses. Um, there is no firm selected to do the professional work yet. Uh, the interviews are scheduled to occur on or after September fifteenth. Um, after selection of the top firm, then the city enters into the pricing phase and commencement of this professional research work. So the next steps as far as the city goes is selection of the consultant team, which we just covered. And then the selected team will go and do all that work. At that point, um, they will identify locations, preliminary site layouts, cost estimates for all of the sites and a consultant recommendation. All of that information for all of the sites will be presented to council. Um, again, none of that work has been done yet, so there's nothing to present at this point. And then at that point, it will be at, at the discretion of council to, to pick the preferred alternative site. The timeline for that to occur is early twenty twenty-one. Um, so that is when the professional work is expected to be done at this point, and this can come back before council, is early twenty twenty-one with those lists of sites and layouts and costs and everything else, um, you know, that was, that, that the council needs. I mean, frankly, you need that information to be able to make an informed decision. So that will come back to council, like I said, early twenty twenty-one with all the information across all of the sites for council to review. So again, just to be clear, no work has been authorized to start. There is no construction company lined up. There is no shovels that are going into ground, any of that. Um, you know, this is purely a professional services RFP that, um, that was advertised. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Uh, Council, do you have any questions for EJ? If you do, please, uh, raise your hand in the, uh, icon. Um, or actually, I, I see, Council President Honda, uh, you're raising your actual hand. Okay. Go ahead. Council President Honda.
Am I still muted?
Uh, no, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, thank you for, um, having this discussion. We have received a lot of emails, um, about this and we have a lot of very upset and concerned citizens about this. And I think it's very important to keep the citizens updated on what the process is and what, what is actually happening now so that, you know, the skate park's not going to go away right now and hopefully, and I hope it never goes away. But, um, you know, the, the process will take quite a while. It's, it's not going to be overnight. So, and we will have other sites to look at also. Thank you very much.
All right. Great. And we've responded to every one of those emails. Um, so I wanted to make sure that, uh, I saw that the council had received that and we had essentially given a summary of, of EJ's, um, uh, statement. So I think somewhere along the line, people thought that, uh, the destruction of the skate park was imminent. And, uh, the most important thing is, is people participate in their democracy and this is, uh, in their, in their local government. And this is a way for them to get involved, have their voices heard and the council's heard it. And, uh, but I wanted to also make sure that the community and the council and, and everybody, uh, is operating with the same, uh, accurate information. So, okay. Uh, anything else on that? Thank you, EJ. Uh, and of course, obviously, if any, if any member of the public, um, has any questions about that, wants a copy of the PowerPoint or anything like that, let us know. We'll provide that and, uh, we'll let you know about that status. Okay. Great job, EJ. Okay. Marriage emerging issues and report. Um, so, um, uh, EJ, that's a, uh, it's a altogether, uh, a fitting that EJ was just giving a report. Uh, we are actually, uh, as, as many people know, our flagpole was struck, uh, by a driver in the early morning hours of New Year's Day, um, or New Year's Eve night. Um, and it was struck. And as a result, uh, the pole could not, uh, withstand the, uh, weight and the pressure of having our big flag on, on there. So, uh, this entire year, we have not been able to fly our flag. Um, and the council passed a, uh, approved a program in, in regard to having the pole refabricated. Uh, it had to be done out in Iowa. Uh, they don't just have seventy-foot flagpoles, um, on a shelf that you can, uh, go and get. So we had to have one fabricated because the pole needs to be replaced because of its structural, uh, insecurity. That replaced, the pole has been made in Iowa, transferred across the country. Uh, the council worked, uh, you know, went through the committee and it's gone through all the processes and, and, uh, now the flag, um, we, we bought a brand new flag for it. What, EJ, what are the dimensions of the flag?
I believe it's fifteen feet by twenty-five feet, if I'm correct.
Oh, yeah. And we got, it's in the-
Very large.
Yeah. It's in the box on, uh, is it still on your desk, EJ?
Uh, no, it's actually in, in our inspector's vehicle to be put up now at this point.
So all this happens tonight. We will be, uh, starting, uh, after tonight's meeting. I'm going to be heading out. Um, I've got my hard hat ready and, uh, myself and Bill and Tyler and a couple other folks and we've invited the mirror. Um, want to let everybody know that, uh, uh, we are going to, um, uh, pull the old pole out and, uh, install the new one. We've got a crane. It took, this has been quite a, quite a progress and a pro- quite a, a work in progress. Can't tell you how many emails I've responded to about whatever happened to our, our flagpole and, and the flag on the, um, in our community. So people, I think, have grown very attached to it. Anyway, tonight, it gets put in. Hopefully, uh, we still have to pull out the other one. So there's a process on that. I won't bore you with the details on that. Hopefully, knock on wood, that'll go well tonight. Uh, we've got to, uh, factor out all that sand and, uh, get that out and then install the new one. And then sometime in the very early morning hours of, uh, in the, uh, early morning hours of September second, a few hours from now, our flag will be hoisted back up, uh, for everyone to see. And so I even got an email on Sunday night, uh, from an individual, uh, who doesn't even live in Federway. And he, I, he emailed me on Sunday night and said, hey, what happened to the flag? So even people who don't live here, uh, are attached to it. So EJ, anything to add on that?
No, you did a good summary. You got, you pretty much nailed it.
I sucked the oxygen out of that. All right. Um-
Ma- Mayor?
Yes.
Ma- I, I think it's important to let everybody know that we are seeking reimbursement from the individual who hit the flagpole.
Yes.
Hopefully his insurance will cover that, but very fortunate that they hit the flagpole and not another person.
Yeah, it was in the early morning hours. Uh, the defendant, the suspect, um, who's charged in Federway Municipal Court was going the wrong way on, uh, three twentieth. And, uh, that case is still pending. Um, and, uh, when that case is resolved, uh, if it's resolved in favor of the city, we will be seeking full restitution from the insurance, uh, company. And, um, and so, you know, obviously I want to make sure that it's very clear that the preser- that the person charged is presumed innocent. And so, uh, that is still a pending matter. And so, um, but we will be seeking, uh, compensation from the insurance company. And, um, and I think that's important to know. Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you for pointing it. And, uh, you know, Linda, what was your, uh, what was your prior job at Lake Haven?
Hey, I was a risk manager. We had sixty vehicles and, and about a hundred employees that two percent, um, well, let me say, any company would have a couple of percent of individuals who seem to have recurring, um, incidents that occur and they need to have some remedial action. So-
How long were you at Lake Haven?
Oh, my goodness. So I was there thirty-three years.
Yeah.
You know, if anybody's interested in knowing how, uh, safety committee works, um, and you have some, uh, opportunity to have remedial action for an employee, yeah, just call it a come-to-Jesus meeting and you get it over with. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your prior service. And it is, you know, we have our, you know, our citizen, uh, uh, council members, uh, who have their lifetime of experience, you know, Greg in the fire service, you in risk management, you know, and, and just, you know, everybody's got their, you know, um, you know, everybody's got their, you know, Susan with nursing and, and, um, so it is, you know, everybody's got the, uh, um, you know, Martin with government and, and Hung with, uh, CPA, excuse me, with, um, um, uh, uh, what's the name of the, uh?
Mayor, it's DSHS.
Oh, my God. DSHS. Thank you. It just ran right out of my head. So we've all got our specialties and it's very, uh, I, I obviously need some, uh, uh, memory lessons. But anyway, uh, thank you. Everybody's got their, uh, um, I'm gonna stop talking. Let's, uh, why don't we move on to the next item? Um, okay. City financial update. Um, Ade, go. Help me. Rescue me.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council President Honda, Council. Uh, this presentation is pretty much to bring you up to speed on where we are regarding the budget and where we are also financially. So I'll be going over the council budget, uh, uh, calendar, which we will have to attend to in the next few months. Uh, also talk about, uh, management presentations and, uh, mayor's, uh, budget priorities and the status of, uh, our budget preparation, especially if the budget is supposed to be presented to the council, uh, in two weeks. And share with you briefly the budget challenges that are coming and , uh, hopefully the mayor council will have to deal with. By the same token, share with you what I think the budget opportunities are and the, what probably distinguish the City of Federway from some of, uh, what is happening in some other cities. And pretty much I give you a summary report. This is the schedule of what we have. Uh, on the fifteenth, the mayor will present his budget to the council. On, uh, September twenty-third, we will have a special meeting that is where the department will start their individual budget presentation. And, uh, September twenty-four, another special meeting at five o'clock, we will also do department presentation. And later on in the slide, I will show you what department will be making their presentation and at what time. Also, September twenty, uh, uh, October sixth, we have another special council meeting with department presentation. On October twenty, and that is when the council start deliberation, having conversation among yourself to see what have been presented and digest the information. So, uh, in the past, we've taken some public comments in those, uh, meetings, but for October twenty, October twenty-first, October fourth, uh, and November fourth, those are the council deliberation periods. Uh, some of those days, we don't have to have them. If we finish our council deliberation, we don't have to, especially the October, uh, twenty-first. The formal public hearing will start on the, uh, November fourth, and that is when we also present some of the ordinances. And, uh, also on November seventeen, we will have budget ordinance, substantial need and tax ordinance presentation. Uh, substantial need, that is pretty much for this year because, you know, I'm missing an L in there, that is because the CPI will be less than one percent. So in- So, in order for the city to actually levy 1%, we have to justify the reason why we're doing that. So, we've only need to do substantial needs ordinance of resolution only in few occasion. I think the last time that we did that in Federal Way was probably 2016, when the CPI was less than 1%. And the plan is to be able to have the budget ordinance, the tax ordinance, the fee schedule, and have that, all of them approved on December 1st.
Ade?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? Just clarification on the schedule again real quick? So, you have 11:04 down there. Is that the 4th or the 3rd?
Thank you. Actually, I ask that question. I think the council's standing rule is if the election falls on the council day, the council meeting moves to the next day. So, November 3rd is Election Day. That is why the council meeting is moved to Wednesday.
This will be the first year that we've done that?
So, for the September 23rd, which would be special council meeting, we'll be having presentation from finance, human resources, city clerk, emergency management, public works, and parks. And the following day will be courts, law, police, community development, and IT. And in October, we will have the council, mayor's office, and economic development. Part of the, what is driving the budget process, I think, and the mayor, share some of this with you in the past few months, as, and some of these, actually, pretty much all of these are also council's priority as well. You know, we want to make sure the security of our citizens and properties are right on the top. I think that has been the city's, the mayor and council's priority for the past, actually, since I have been here. The mayor wants to make sure that we maintain our current level of service and to avoid a layoff of current staff, and also to make sure that we do not lose, you know, some of our staff with so much institutional knowledge to due to, you know, them not making as much as it's been offered in the market. Also, he wants to ensure that our nonrepresented employees do not fall too far behind in how much that they should be making. And I think all of these, we're trying to address in the budget that will be presented to you on the 15th. The status of the budget presentation, the mayor and myself have met with all the directors to discuss their budget needs, you know, and those are the things that the mayor has taken into consideration. And that is what we have now, that we are using to compile our budget to make sure we stay within. One of, again, one of the things that the mayor has driven home for the past six years is we must and we will leave within our means, and that is in line with the reserve policy and everything that you've passed over the years. So, with that budget compilation, the mayor will present his budget on the 15th, that is two weeks from now, and after that, we will start the council deliberation over the budget. Some of the challenges that will be explained during the budget, that actually, I have mentioned pretty much all of them in the past few months, and again, will probably mention that again as we start the budget process. Red light and school zone, because of the lockdown, because of the school being in lockdown, and they are doing that remotely, I think the revenue there has really, really suffer. And we use the red light money to fund, you know, nine people in the police department and four employees in public works, and we've also used that fund to acquire traffic and transportation equipment, which is what it is used for. So, what that means is when we have major shortfall in that red light, we will have to find a way either to fill that up or to use our fund balance at least to carry us for a while. REIT, because we are in recession, and as I'm putting this, the budget together based on the report that was released by Washington State Economic Economist, Economic and Revenue Update for August 17, we've really determined we are in recession. So, because of that, I think our REIT probably will go down a little bit. We're REIT down. We use REIT primarily to cover our debt. Most of our debt are incurred due to capital construction or capital acquisition. So, we use it to fund our debt service or construct infrastructure or other capital projects. So, if we do not have much of that money, those things may suffer a little bit. The next one is our sales tax revenue. Sales tax, because of the lockdown, because of the pandemic, I think our sales tax is going down. But there's some good news, I think, and I'll share that in the next slide. Permit fee, that is another fund, you know, that we get through people applying for permit for construction and all of that. With less construction, we foresee reduction in revenue in that area. Cities other facilities, we need support from general fund. With the lockdown being in place, we've seen what is happening with Dumars Bay Performing Heart Center and Community Center, because we want to keep them open to prevent, you know, destruction of, you know, of people vandalizing the property. Even though the property is closed, we still have to have some cost when revenues are not coming in. So, you know, if those properties are not bringing in any money, that means we still have to spend some money on them. Substantial need ordinance, I think that is something that we will have to do this year, which we often, we often do not do every year. The budget opportunities, I think we have these opportunities based on the decision that the mayor and council have made over the years. And seriously, even though we're going through this pandemic, I'm pleased to actually be in Federal Way now because of the financial condition that the Federal Way is in, based on some of the decisions that you've made. Yes, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that, you know, everything is hunky-dory, and we don't have, but we are sitting in a better position than most of my, most of the other cities. I talk to my colleagues and hear the things that is happening with them and the kind of challenges that they are facing. I think the City of Federal Way is reasonably sitting very well. Yes, we feel a little bit of pain, yes, we will. But the beauty of it is, when some of these cities were doing really well, the City of Federal Way is awfully doing okay. So, we will continue to do awfully, awfully doing okay. While those other cities that were doing so well before will have to take a big, you know, reduction. So, utility tax on water and soil, the judgment, that is part of what is making us sitting a little bit better. The business makeup in Federal Way, when the lockdown took place, you know, for cities that depended on big mall as their revenue source, when the mall was closed, they were in trouble. We did not depend on the big mall for our revenue source. You know, we depended on Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, and Costco, and those stores were not affected. That is part of the good opportunity for us. The council and the mayor decided to leave SCOR, you know, last year, and I think that is also a great blessing to us. The jail ADP, even though we're not, you know, people that deserve to be in jail are still in jail, but because of the economy and the lockdown, there's not really much activities in town, so our ADP in jail has been low, and we probably expect to have it at a lower level for the next year or so, you know. Sound transit, I think about two years or so ago, I made a presentation to the council about the impact of sound transit. Even though our sales tax revenue will go down, when sound transit start construction in Federal Way, even though, again, sound transits have taken over or have acquired some of the properties in Federal Way where we were generating revenue before, because of the purchase, the sound transit will be acquiring to build their rail, we will also see an increase in sales tax revenue from their construction. So, those are part of the things that will make us healthy. You know, it's coming at the perfect time that we would need that increase in revenue from sales tax. Our reserves, you know, some people call reserve rainy day fund. Well, I think it's probably raining now, and it will be council's decision on what they want to do with that, and I think those are part of our safety net that we have in place that we can tap into if we need to. Their capacity, I shared this with the mayor, that when we start Performing Heart Center was a perfect time the economy was down, but by the time we built it, the economy was on the rise. If the city wants to do major construction, you want to do it during the recession. The labor will be cheap, and also, the cost of borrowing will also be cheap, you know. So, that is something that is also on our side that I think may help us as we move along. In summary, I do believe that our 2021, 22 budget will have some challenges due to the pandemic, but at the same token, the city's financial condition is way better than most other cities due to our utility tax, SCOR, ADP, and the business maker. And that would be the end of my presentation.
Okay, Council, do you have any questions?
Do you have any question?
Yes, Council, do you have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Moore, I see a hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Farrell. Ade, thank you for your outstanding work and for continuing to keep us apprised, you know, I'm going to say several times a month, not just in our committees but our council meetings, so thank you for that. I think it's really important. It's always good to hear that we're doing, and correct me if I'm using the wrong terminology here, but we're doing slightly better than other cities. And of course, I say that and wish them the best of luck with their budgets challenges. That being said, you know, looking at your council budget schedule, you know, I've always been a proponent of how do we get an opportunity to engage with the citizens with their budget, the people's budget? And so, it appears that we're kind of headed in the exact same path of us doing the exact same thing that we do each and every year. Is there a plan, or has it ever been discussed, to maybe do a listening session when it comes to the budget or something to engage with our citizens on getting them to interact and understand their, this is the mayor's proposed budget, and that the council has the opportunity to review it now? I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is not, nothing new. I've talked about it last year, just wondered if there's a, not last year, two years ago, if there's a discussion of that that took place.
Well, I think, actually, that's exactly what, when I bring forth the proposed budget in, at the next meeting on the 15th, that's what these meetings are supposed to be. They're televised, they are open to the public, they are advertised. So, that's what these are. These are, you know, it's like, these, these meetings are public. These meetings are in the paper. These meetings are televised. I'm not sure where else, and I, I actually, I want to be really candid with you, and I want to be, I want to be very honest with you. I don't believe in just having something for show, because, so you could check a box and say you did something, and it checks a box because it, it looks good. I believe in functionality, and I believe in intellectual integrity, and that's what these are. We're going to, we're going to, these are televised, they're open to the public. This is, these are the public's meetings. And we're going to have our directors give their presentations, and if people want to engage, they can. But I don't want to go on a listening session that is not intellectually honest, and we're going to have, we're going to be very fortunate to, to balance this budget, to make sure we don't have to lay anybody off. There's been a historic, I mean, if you think about where some cities are at, there is a historic level of unemployment in this country, in the state, in the city. There is a historic level of shutting down of the economy, and we're short millions of dollars. And one of the things I want to do is make sure that we don't have to lay anybody off, we don't have to reduce services, and we don't have a lot of money to play with. So, that's, that's a very candid, maybe a little too candid response, but I think we could have probably a, you know, I could see having a Facebook Live meeting. Oftentimes, we have, we have those, but I wouldn't live in it just the budget. I would have it, you know, like I said, once again, I'm actually simultaneously not only being, participating in this, but watching, this is on YouTube as well. So, but I could see having a Facebook Live event in the next month, six weeks, in which we open it up.
Yeah, I don't think, Mr. Mayor, no one's talking about, let's create a show and not make it authentic and real. I don't think no one's talking about that. I think, you know, I think, Mr. Mayor, we go through the same process every single time, and it's okay to be a little bit innovative, it's okay to think a little bit outside the box, and this is the taxpayers' money, you know? And I think clearly, for years and years and years, and years, we've done exactly the same, and I think it's time to think outside the box to get people engaged with what's actually going on with our tax dollars and what proposals are in place. But that's, that's, that's in your ballpark, not in mine, so I just simply am putting it out there, so thank you.
Well, I think we did that last year, didn't we, the last time? Didn't we have a, like a Facebook Live event and a, you know, didn't we kind of open it up? I'm open to that, but-
Yeah.
Anybody, Council, anybody else, any other comments or-
Thank you.
Suggestions? Thank you, Councilmember. Let me take a look.
I have my hand up.
Yes, Council President Honda.
Thank you. There are some council members who have approached me about the council having an event that the public could attend, talking about the budget, and my concern with doing that is that we don't have the staff backing us as the mayor does. So, when we have done Coffee with Council, which we've done two or three times, we have our staff, which is Jerilyn Clark, and she's there, and she's, you know, running the YouTube thing and the cameras and stuff, but we don't have the staff that would help us with the answers that we might need to come up with. And so, Mayor, if you do a Facebook Live event, it would be nice if perhaps some of us could be there with you to participate in some of the answers that citizens might have, because we don't have the same resources that you do to be able to hold an event like that.
Okay. Okay, let me think about that, and I, you know, I want to make sure that what, I think that Councilmember Moore hit the nail on the head. I mean, I think actually, where, Councilmember Moore, thank you, Council President, let me just start off by saying- I mean, I think actually where, where, Councilmember Moore, thank you, Council President, let me just start off by saying that, thank you. Um, I think what you're saying is there needs to be a level of collaboration and partnership when we go out to the public. And um, because that'll, that'll yield better results, obviously. It's more transparent, it's better for the people. What I think you're, what I hear, what I hear, what I hear that is perhaps we need, need to add something that has a a public interaction component to our, our budget. Because if we have a quorum of council, uh, obviously that's another official meeting. And uh, Councilmember Moore, I just want to let you know that I, you know, I understand what you're saying in regard to uh making sure that we reach out to the public. I want to make sure, and I know you do as well, that it's authentic and um, um, that, that, you know, uh, that we're doing, um, that we're earnest when we ask people's advice. There's not a lot of room in our budget uh to move and, but it is important to hear from people as well. Uh, I mean, that's what this process is about. The reason why the process is the way it is is because we need to have public meetings and we need to make sure that we hear from the directors uh as they give all their, you know, so they're it, it, you know, there's only a certain way to do this, um, and that's to hear from our directors and, and having the people understand, um, you know, uh, the budget. So I see, uh, Councilmember Safadass, uh, do you have, uh, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and um, I'm sorry, someone's moing their lawn, so I may be interrupted. Um, my comment is um in support of what uh Council President Susan Hanga said, that I would like it to be available to all of us, not just some council members. So, but, and I know the concern is quorum, but I think we can announce it early enough to allow all of us to participate or be present. So I want that to be considered if we're gonna go that route.
Okay, you bet. Yeah, and that's actually where I went immediately as well, uh, Lydia, was that, you know, we want to make sure that the, you know, if the council's involved, uh, then, then all of the council needs to be involved. And then I think what we're talking about is adding a session. And we're adding a session that we'll need to think about where that would be most beneficial um in regard to, you know, hearing from the public as we, as we work on this. So um, that, that's kind of what I'm hearing so far.
Yeah, we may not all be available, but I want us to have the opportunity.
Yeah.
Especially for those of us who work full time, uh, whenever there's an opportunity where we can take a break or or uh show up. We would like to have that opportunity, so.
Well, and I, just in regard to complete candor, I, you know, I I may have another Facebook Live meeting, but it won't, it won't be exclusively focused on the budget. So I, you know, I don't know. I mean, but I, but if we do have something that's focused on the budget and geared toward the budget, um, then I will make sure the council's included. So I'll talk to, I think the takeaway here is, oh, the takeaway is I'll talk to Council President Honda, which, uh, who's next? Go ahead, please.
Oh, thanks. I was just gonna say that the, the, um, our citizens and our business owners can always interact with us on email and Facebook, our own Facebook page. But we also have our council committees in which they can come in and talk to us. And we have our Fed Rec Committee, which meets the fourth Tuesday of every month. And we talk about the budget every single month at that meeting. And unfortunately, we don't get a lot of public input with that. You know, we have our few regular citizens that always watch the budget and always have some input, but um, you know, not as many citizens as I would like to see um interacting with us there. But we do have that, that ability to interact with our citizens at those, those meetings.
I do. It, it would be, um, you know, I, uh, Councilmember Moore, we'll put some thought into it. Um, I, I do like the idea. Um, I would say though that if somebody is truly interested in, say it's police budget, I would really encourage people to, you know, figure, you know, we've got the, the agenda uh was just announced right now, we can, you know, it's on our, it's on our website. If anybody that is interested in, in these issues, would really encourage them to, you know, watch from the comfort of their home um and or, you know, they can, they can watch the YouTube meeting at any point. Um, and uh, and maybe what we could do as well is reach out on social media and let people know, hey, remind, give people a little nudge, hey, this is what's going on. Um, uh, you know, take a look, these are the links, these are the meetings. Um, and, and just make sure that people are, you know, uh, aware of what's going on. Lot heavy lifting going on by, by our council and staff. Okay, um, yes.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you for that and I appreciate you acknowledging that and whatnot. Like I said, it's, it, it was a concern two years ago and I certainly, I certainly don't want to have a repeat of that concern and rehash things, you know, I want to be able to continue to move forward in our budget process as well. So um, I, I know that, that this is, uh, as you know, Mr. Mayor, you know this very, very well. This is the single most important thing we do as a council and as a mayor as well. Uh, and so, uh, you know, so, so the next couple of months are gonna be absolutely critical. And I think the more we look at innovation and utilize technology to our benefit and engage the public, that December is gonna certainly look pretty good when we pass the budget. Um, you know, so I think it's, it's just really important, that's all. And I appreciate you acknowledging that, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, maybe during one of the deliberation phases, we could open it up in a, in a Facebook interactive. Uh, let's explore that. Thomas, let's uh, uh, Thomas and Tyler, let's, let's explore how we can um, maybe make our deliberations, um, you know, much more interactive with the public. I think that may be ultimately what we're looking for, to hear from the public, get that input. Um, and then also proactively reach out via social media and regular media. Um, you know, engaging with people about, hey, this is what's going on. Um, you know, make sure you're watching this. So I think that's, that's critical. Okay, and I know you're a big champion of transparency and public input, so thank you, Councilmember Moore. Um, I just want to speak real with you and be candid, um, so thank you. Okay, um, now, we've got litter removal event, uh, which is uh Cleanup Federal Way. I'd like to thank the council president, uh, she uh and I have been in conversations about this and, you know, many people have been noticing, um, you know, around our city that we've got trash in certain locations. And I think apart from keeping the, uh, you know, keeping our citizens safe and their property safe, uh, when Aday was giving that presentation, I, I winced because one of the other priorities on our budget uh that was not included on there, um, uh, was, um, and because I, you know, didn't uh articulate that with Aday, was keeping our city clean. I think it is a basic uh priority and assumption and priority of our community that our city streets be free of garbage. And so if anybody sees garbage around the community, tell us, we will take care of it. I took care, I answered an email today, several times a week I receive emails uh on this issue. Um, I would say that in the budget amendment that we did, that the council has just passed, uh, we authorized two additional Public Works employees uh assigned to litter pickup with a truck uh that will assist us. Uh, we have a new, um, a member in the State of the City address that in, uh, which seems a long time ago now, uh, back at the end of February, um, we've got our newly named and soon to be operational um, litter uh uh removal and uh uh code compliance um app uh that'll be called um Eyes on Federal Way. And that is in the final stages of, of just being, we just signed the contract, council approved the contract, and we're just in the, in the process of, of launching that, which will be, you'll see a lot of that. But in the meantime, um, we need to make sure that what's on the streets right now, 320th, maybe it's pack highway, you know, whether it's maybe in your neighborhood, we're having an event on Saturday, September 12th. Um, and we're going to be, uh, we're gonna be, make sure we're in compliance, we're gonna have smaller groups. We've been in planning uh with this, uh, with the council president, want to make sure that the council will partners in this as well uh with city staff and EJ and uh Bill and Tyler. And uh, we're getting word out um on social media and um, and uh really getting the word out about making sure that people show up uh to participate in this. Um, again, uh, you'd, you'd go to the parking lot of the Performing Arts and Event Center on Saturday. Uh, I believe check-in is about nine o'clock orientation. People will get their gloves, their litter picker wrappers, their bags, their maps. We're going to pre-register people and have people in groups of five uh to make sure that we don't, we're not in violation of the governor's order. And then from 10 to noon, uh, we'll be picking up. Um, Council President Honda, did I miss anything or would you like to add anything?
Um, no, I'd just like to thank the mayor for partnering with the council because this is something that is really important to keep federal way clean. Um, this has been something that we've been trying to do since May. And with all of the different orders coming out of the governor's office, it's been a little difficult to to plan and to, to get the public to be involved in. But um, we look forward to having as many people as possible come and, and pick up. And, you know, once you pick up on Saturday, I hope that you do it on a regular basis. If you, you know, adopt a street, adopt your neighborhood, adopt something and keep federal way clean.
Yeah.
We can do it. Uh, we know people do it citywide. This is Saturday, the 12th. Please be there and it'll be a great, great thing for federal way to keep federal way clean. Let's be proud of our city. We have a lot to be proud of and let's just pick up federal way.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if people
Thanks for your help.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, council, uh, thank you, council president, and, and thanks, council. I'm excited that we're gonna do this together. Susan and I were working on this and talking about this and, and it's, it's collaborative. We're all in this together, we all live here. Um, and if you see garbage around town, and once again, let us know, we'll take care of it. Keep in mind, there's two types of, either it's on private property and it becomes a code issue, code enforcement. And we, we're very assertive about that, making sure that we clean, you know, have, have private property owners clean their property up. Or it's in right of way, it's on city streets or sidewalks or city property, and then it's our responsibility to clean up. And uh, so that's really, you know, we want, need to make sure that we put our best foot forward. People notice that. You could tell, you know, a clean city from a dirty city, so um, it's very important. And I think actually it's, we're really getting excited, you guys, about the launch of, of um of um Eyes on Federal Way. And that's gonna be, a lot of cities in our, in the Puget Sound area have something like this. And it's gonna be a very, very important thing for our community where people see a mattress, a shopping cart, garbage that was dumped, they can get on the, on the app. And we'll, we'll have a system in place in which it's just methodical, following up with people, making sure that people know where it's at in the process. So that's what's right around the corner. But September 12th, uh, let's come together and, and clean up federal way. Okay, uh, we've got another drive-in movie. Um, I'd like to thank Bill um for all those yard signs that you guys see around town. Not only, you know, Bill, you know, works his tail off, he, he actually constructs these signs, you know, puts them on poles and then puts them out. Uh, so I was driving around over the weekend, I saw a bunch of signs out, so we're, uh, we're gonna be able to hopefully get a few more cars into the parking lot. It's at the PAC parking lot, uh, the same day, Saturday, the 12th of September. Uh, we're showing the 2019 version of Aladdin. It's not the, um, it's a live action, um, uh, you know, film, it's got the Will Smith in it. And uh, uh, so it's the 2019 Aladdin, um, at the PAC, September 12th. Uh, John, what time do you think you're gonna get started there?
I don't have an exact time, sir, but it should be uh a little earlier than the last one as we're losing daylight every day. I would imagine around eight o'clock, uh, but I'll confirm that for you, so. Uh, I apologize for not having that ready.
Okay, uh, thank you, and uh, uh, yeah, that'll be nice. Um, how many cars did we have at the last one, at Toy Story 4?
Eighty-seven, and this time we think we can get ninety in.
That's great.
With some, a little more creative uh parking with keeping the social distancing available.
But it filled up quickly, you guys, so if you, if you're interested in going, make sure you get there quickly or early, um, as early as you can. Um, okay, and um, and if people are not in groups of, uh, you know, if they socially distance, there were some people toward the back or in certain areas that, um, you know, were able to watch the film um, that were not necessarily in their car. So there, there's, you know, toward the back and on the sides, people can see as well, so. Um, just FYI, as long as you're not, um, in, within six feet of others and, and you're not in a, um, in a group of more than five, just family members.
They do have to come in a car though, and they have to be a part of the car, they cannot walk up and see the movie. That's against the rules. That's not a movie in the park, yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Health, health department, disclaimer.
All right, all right.
Do they have to wear masks? If they're getting out of their cars?
Yes, we encourage everyone to be in a mask uh if they're out of their vehicle.
Okay, thanks.
Good job, John. Good work, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I, we gotta make sure. Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, we, you know, I want to let you know, I received a phone call from Representative Johnson over the weekend and because of the passing of um, of the star of Black Panther, um, and I know, uh, Lydia was um, uh, was, was part of this conversation, um, uh, that we were considering um having a drive-in movie, um, you know, with, um, you know, Black Panther. Uh, John, the first thing on Monday morning, John looked into it and, uh, I think it's Chadwick Boseman, just a tragic loss, who happened to, you know, even though he, he played uh Jackie Robinson in the film, he actually happened to pass away on Jackie Robinson Day. Um, and, you know, it was a superstar on the screen, he was a superstar in real person and in real life, and it was just a tragic loss. So, um, uh, Lydia, would you like to say a few words about that? I know that we tried to, we tried to get that, we couldn't, we couldn't get the film that wasn't being offered at this time, but um, it would have been a nice thing to do.
And thank you for trying, uh, Mayor, and Jesse contacted me about this. Uh, it would have been a great um experience because for a lot of black people, he was a superhero. He did, he was the first to even play this role. And so there was a lot of um hope that there would be more of these. And so I'm hopeful and believing that there would be others who would follow in his footsteps. Um, also to know, as someone who was born in Africa from myself, it's important because a lot of times African countries on the continent is perceived as something that doesn't have a whole lot to offer. So I think this also gave us and my community that, yeah, we, we do come from a continent that, that is rich in culture and rich in every way and in, in ways that people can't even imagine. And I think he portrayed that in that movie, and so um, thank you for trying. And um, if there's an opportunity, we would still like to explore it, even if it's for future.
Absolutely.
Um, thank you for Jesse and as well as um scoreboard.
Okay.
Nikki Shafalit, so, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, um, okay, we've already talked about the um budget meetings. Um, and um, uh, Councilmember Moore, I'll take your, um, and Councilperson Honda, I'll take your suggestions to heart and we'll find a way to uh, uh, attempt to bring the public more into that process. Okay, um, all right, uh, council committee reports. Uh, first, we've got Parks, Recreation, Human Services, uh, Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Coach Moore.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mayor. I'm um really thinking that uh cleaning up our city and making it a pleasant place to live and encouraging our businesses to reopen, we're going to have a lot of people who want to move here out of the urban core uh simply because they can now telecommute and uh find um, you know, a, a haven for them to live. And we, we've always been the best kept s- a secret in the Puget Sound area according to um uh, the fellow who owns the um Bellevue Square. Um, so, and so I, I really think that as more people find out that we have beautiful sound views as well as a beautiful place to live, uh, we're going to have more people trying to move here. And um, I think you can already see that in the fact that our house prices are increasing. And um, I have people uh all day long trying to contact me about buying my house or refinancing or whatever. So it's quite a, I think we're, we're very fortunate to live here. Uh, with the Parks meeting, uh, the next uh Safety Committee meeting, Parks meeting will be September 8th at 5:00 PM. Uh, we'll only have two items on the agenda, they have to do with reimbursement and with a grant. Uh, many of the things that are involved with the Parks Committee were discussed uh earlier this evening when we um interviewed several individuals for a different commissions. And so we'll be appointing those folks tonight for the Senior Commission, the Parks Commission and the Arts Commission. And we, I'm always amazed at the quality of people that we have who volunteer to get involved on our commissions and and that holds true again today. Uh, and then later on in the agenda, under the um public hearing, uh, we will have, uh, Sarah Bridgert will be presenting the Second Amendment to the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And so that's my report for the Parks Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councilmember. All right, uh, Land Use Transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, my first meeting will be for a chair, would be September 14th, or it'd be Zoom, like anything else. Uh, we have about eight items on there, six of those are some items in the items and the other two are updates. And so I look forward to giving my first report in the next meeting, council meeting. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right, Finance Economic Development Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our committee met on August 25th, and we approved of several items that are on the agenda today. The voucher for July 2020, monthly financial report of July 2020, surplus of public works and parked vehicles, purchase of tow behind truck loader, leaf vacuum, and the amendment number one to goods and services agreement to abatement of unfit premises. One thing I do want to mention is the purchase of the tow behind truck loader if council approved this. This is really cool. This is one of the things that I mentioned from the very first time I got on the council. Try to use technology, try to use automation to make staff life, you know, easier, more efficient. So this this piece of equipment is actually, I probably just simplified it, hook up to the truck and it suck up the leaf and all the the junk and, you know, it's really efficient, really cool. So I hope council will approve it. With that, oh, our next meeting is going to be on September 22nd, and I think is going to be on Zoom again. So with that, I end my report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, now we've got Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you, Mayor. We didn't have a meeting last month, so I don't have anything to report on, except to just take this opportunity to thank Tim for all the work that he's been doing for our city, not just for Lodging Tax. Our next meeting is Wednesday, September the 9th at 10 o'clock. And it's also going to be a meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, Regional Committees Report, the PCC, Public Issues Committee, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. So I apologize here. There was no meeting for the month of August. And the next meeting, I will report during my council report, the next Regional Committee that we have, I'll, again, I'll report that during my council report. And with that, I will end my quick little report.
Okay, Council President Honda.
Thank you. So I wanted to let the public know that on the City Council Facebook page, there is a response to all of the questions that concerns that we have been getting about the Public Works Maintenance Yard or at Still Lake. And if you read that and you have any questions, let us know. There have been a lot of emails to the council. I'm working on responding to those emails, but it does take time. And I will get to all of them, but it will take time. And so our council response is on our Facebook page, and please, please read that. We do try to keep our Facebook page current. Jerry Lynn Clark, our staff person, is the one who does put stuff on Facebook pa- on the Facebook page. And I want to really thank her for that because she does keep it very current and very up to date. I also want to thank the 26 applicants who applied for the open seat on council. Two of those folks did drop out, so we have 24 applicants. At this point, we do not have a date for the interviews. The council's desire is to hold the interviews in person. Of course, according to Governor Inslee's rules, we can't do that until we're in Phase Three. But we do know the governor has changed his his rules back and forth a little bit on what is allowed in phases, different phases. And I'm hoping that by sometime in early October, he will be allowing city councils and other government groups to meet in person because I know that we could do it safely and and have much better meetings than we have on Zoom, even though I'm very, very thankful that we're able to meet on Zoom. And I think our technically, our IT department has done an amazing job, as well as our city clerk and all the other folks who make this happen. So anyway, so we don't have a date, but we will get that date out public as soon as we have it. We thank all of those folks who have applied, and I would just encourage you to keep involved, watch us, listen to what's going on, especially when the budget discussions start, because those are really important discussions, and we need you to to be on top of that kind of stuff. I also was asked to give an update on the Flavor of Federal Way. The Diversity Commission had their first regular commission meeting for the first time in July since COVID started. And of course, they weren't able to do an in-person Flavor of Federal Way like they have in the past. And so they decided to do a virtual event. And I really have to give my hat off to them. They did an amazing job for coming together so quickly and doing a great event. On August 3rd, they had the kickoff event where they told everyone about what was happening during the week. On August 4th, they had food vendors. And I'm going to go ahead and now read what was written for me to read, so I don't miss anything. On August 4th, they had 25 food vendors. This was our most interactive day with citizens. It was exciting to see them share their favorite restaurants in the post feed. We have some yummy places in Federal Way to eat. On August 5th, we had 11 business vendors talk. We had four businesses offer Flavor Federal Way specials. Many offer 10% off of their total orders. On August 6th, nonprofit day, and there were 19 nonprofits that participated. They shared what they do and encouraged people to go see them for help, give money or volunteer at the nonprofits. On August 7th, there were performances, and there were five performers. And these were past Flavor of Federal Way performances and an additional YouTube link to the video of their choice in their contact information. Throughout the week, four diversity commissioners were highlighted, and they shared their thoughts on the Flavor of Federal Way. On Monday, August 10th, the event finished by thanking everyone for their participation and encouraged everyone to shop and support their local community. Everyone who participated was grateful that we were having the event and helping to promote their businesses. You can see more at www.facebook.com/FlavorOfFederalWay. Flavor of Federal Way, yes. I hope I didn't mess that up. www.facebook.com/FlavorOfFederalWay. I really thank the Diversity Commission and staff for doing this. This was an amazing event. And they had very little time to plan it and to get it done, and they did it. Our commissions, our citizen commissions are truly amazing. You know, there are citizens who step forward, volunteer their time to do things like this because staff can't do everything, council can't do everything. And truly amazing how talented folks are in Federal Way and how much and how willing they are to give to the community and to make Federal Way such a great place to live. So thank you so very much for what you did. And that is my report. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, now, most important part of the evening, citizen comments. Stephanie, do we have anybody on the line?
Yes, Mayor, we have four people signed up and two letters to read. So the first two we have up. First one is Lynn Idahoza. I believe she's on the line.
Lynn, can you hear us?
She's allowed to talk, but has not unmuted yet. There she is.
Oh, hi, guys. Sorry, let me move to a more quiet space. Can you light it?
Mm-mm.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor Barrow, city council members. Hope you're all doing well. First, I want to start by saying thank you for your partnership and bringing the Federal Way Black Collective and multi-service center event with numerous other partners. Nothing to lose but our chains to life. It was an amazing three-day event, and it was a great experience for the community. I'm excited about the upcoming opportunities to expand the services that we provide here in Federal Way. Tonight, I really wanted to share my personal feelings about the recent overtime expenditures, because regardless of how you feel about the protests in Seattle in June, the reality is it was a highly controversial decision made without any conversation with city council, the interagency agreement regarding how officers are deployed in other cities, especially considering how at the same time you all were pledging that Black Lives Matter, some of you even participated in the safe, peaceful protest here locally in Federal Way. From my understanding, based on the questions asked during the meeting by city council members, they still seem to be asking questions about how that rolled out until after the decision was already made. So there seemed to be learning about it. Currently, a judge has ordered that a recall petition to potentially move Mayor Durkin, quote from the Seattle Times, Judge Roberts' role is to assume the charges that filed against Durkin are true and to determine whether they're both specific and serious enough to allow the petition to proceed. The charge she allowed to go forward alleges Durkin failed to implement new policing policies after tear gas and other chemical agents were used on protesters in May and June. It occurs, it accuses her of misfeance, malfeance, and violation of the oath of office. Then I saw that in the FedRAC meeting, it's discussed that we're not able to recoup a substantial amount that we paid out to our officers for overtime. If our officers are going to be participating in crowd control where it's possible that orders are going to be given that violate the Constitution, we should be having the city council weigh in. Last budget session, I urged you all to put a cap on overtime pending city council approval over a certain amount, and I strongly urge you to consider adding that cap this year. City council is supposed to hold the purse strings. So much happens with autonomy by the mayor's office and city staff that's not elected. We need you all to be weighing in on these decisions. In regards to the public budget meetings, I fully support Council President Honda's suggestion to host public budget meetings in settings like the copy with the council and give public an opportunity to participate in the process. We made great strides in regards to transparency, and I'm really looking forward to how you implement that goal as this process happens in the future. And have a great night. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you, Lynn.
All right, Mayor. The next person we have is Bernadine Lund, and she's also on the line.
All right.
Hello? Yes, I am unmuted now. I just have two quick comments. The first one is about Item 7E, renting a space to Fred Hutchinson. I guess I'd seriously like you to consider doing that. I'm not biased in any way, given that I've worked there for 34 years. But anyway, I think the research study, their vaccine trial they're doing is pretty important. And I looked up the PI, the Principal Investigator, he's also in the infectious disease institute. And he was also the executive director of the HIV vaccine trials. I think he has a lot of experience. And I know I told people that I wouldn't take the vaccine when it first came out, but if Fred Hutch says it's okay, I feel comfortable taking the vaccine. The second one is I wanted to say, you know, for continuing to follow up with the Government Accountability Office on the issue with the FAA. I don't think the rest of the council knows about this, but I appreciate you continuing to push on that effort, and I look forward to helping with that in the following weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadine. And yeah, those are such important issues for our community. And I'd like to thank Bill for all his coordination with them, and been a lot of work that's been ongoing. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Great to hear from you. Okay.
Next person we have, Mayor, is Tersa Idahoza, and then Sai Semeneni is after Tersa.
Okay.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. We can hear you.
Hi, I want to say hello to everybody. Again, thank you for the committee, Seattle, the council meeting that we're having and the open communications. I kind of wanted to just piggyback on some of the things we've heard about the budget and encourage open communication that the public could actually have comments on. The other thing is that a concern for me is that hearing the budget being read by a day, we didn't hear anything about the over $100,000 that was spent with the police department participating in the Seattle protest events. Apparently, that's about more than our city budget already for for the half of the year. So my concern is that when we do discuss the budget, like two years ago, we had major issues that most of the city council members continued to just allow the mayor to do what he wanted to do without, again, they hold the purse strings for all of us. So given the fact that we do have, we don't make a lot of money here, and I think that's something that they need to look at, not just spending money, but how Federal Way will begin to make money as well, so we can have some greater reserves, as well as make sure that everybody has an input on how the money is being spent and not just allow the mayor to spend without having any accountability to the people of Federal Way, because the city council members, you're our voice. So those type of things don't happen. So I, like I said, I am very concerned that over $100,000 was spent during those, for our police officers from our federal budget to have been in Seattle during that time. Thank you. Again, this is a great city. We all want to be here. So I do am glad we have these conversations because we all want to be here and make it better and the best place it could be. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chief, do you have anything to talk about that issue with regard to our participation? I know that it's been quite some time since we sent anybody up there. And can you talk about that at all?
Sure, Mayor. I could talk about the overtime money and our Civil Disturbance Unit response to regional issues. I do know that through June, first half of the year, mainly starting, you know, after May or so, we had, we responded to nine protests. Most of them were within our city limits. We did respond to a few South King County cities to assist them, but this was on mutual aid, part of the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit. But the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit also, from South King County, responds to our city for our protests, assists us as well. So there's mutual aid that goes back and forth. To my recollection, I think we've been up in Seattle on two separate occasions. The $103,000, that that is not, I mean, that's grossly inaccurate to say that we spent that overtime in Seattle, because that's just absolutely not accurate at all. Our overtime budget for the police department, Mayor, is $767,000 a year. And then we also have about $240,000 in billable overtime, but we do recoup that overtime cost. So with with the $767,000, what that really pays for, there's some things that that we're not really able to address with the staffing. For example, you know, civil disturbance unit is one. We've had numerous protests within our community. Most of them have been, they've all been peaceful, which is great, but we have to call in our team for that. So that might be one example of overtime. If somebody calls in, for example, sick at the last minute, and we don't meet our minimum staffing, sometimes we have to hire overtime to fill that shift. Sometimes there's Superior Court or municipal court officers are called in, particularly those who work swing shift, night shift, that have to go to court. We pay overtime for that. So we do have to budget a certain amount of money as a police department to meet those needs with overtime costs. But yes, this year's been unusual in terms of spending a little more money on overtime regarding protests and demonstrations. But the $103,000, that is not accurate at all. I think that number probably reflects where we are in terms of the numbers, what's budgeted, and and that we're over $103,000. That's probably where that number came from. But we've only been up to Seattle a couple of times, and that was at the initial onset when they asked for help.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, they think there was a concern at one point that one of the precincts was going to be overrun. I think there was an assault on a, I think the downtown robbery headquarters, I think it was the headquarters of the Seattle Police Department, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, that was before the autonomous zone. We were up there a couple of times as part of the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit. We didn't respond alone on it as a team with South County cities.
Yeah. Yeah, I recall the city of Seattle put out a- Yeah. Yeah, I recall the City of Seattle put out a general urgent request for aid. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, Mayor, just to be clear, I think, you know, for the public, and Chief can explain more, mutual aid is also something that the City of Federal Way benefit from also. So, and I think it is not the city's policy, it is not Seattle's policy, it is state guideline to be able to afford each community to be able to protect itself. So I think it's not just Federal Way or Auburn that is doing it. I think the City of Federal Way will benefit by getting assistance should we need it to. So I guess, so that people don't have the misconception that all of this is spent on Seattle and we're not getting our money, City of Federal Way could be on the receiving end at any time. And I think it is the state law, and I don't think City of Federal Way has much choice in what we do. Let Chief add if I got it wrong, so.
Okay. All right. Stephanie, do you have any more letters? Do you have two letters to read?
We have one more citizen comment, Mayor. We have Sai Semenini on the line.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
And then two letters.
That's right. Okay. Sai, you are on.
Hi, Mayor Farrell, are you guys going to start the timer or should I just time myself?
We'll wait till you get started. Hold on. Normally, they put the timer on the screen. Hold on, I'll tell you when it's, okay, you're ready to go, Sai.
Awesome. Thank you so much for accepting public comment tonight. First, I want to start off on a positive note and say it is so exciting that we have 24 applicants for Councilmember Copeng's position, and I hope we really pick folks on the merits of their application and not solely choose someone that has served on a commission before. I too am commenting tonight because I have budget concerns. I really appreciate you asking the chief some of those questions about the itemization on why we've exceeded our police overtime payments by 22% compared to last year when it's a pandemic and everybody's home. I think it is concerning, whether it's a state law or not, that even us having a track record of recently dealt with lawsuits, that we are getting involved in so many hours with a city and a police department that is violating both their federal consent decree as well as recent judgments that have been given against them. So while I appreciate that we might have been responding because of a mutual aid law or to give assistance so that it can be rendered to us in the future, we do need to be careful about our taxpayers' dollars and not get involved in incidents that we didn't cause that might cause those future lawsuits. And I would appreciate it very much if it's possible for us to have an itemization of those hours to see what proportion of our revenue was spent on Seattle with geofencing data, because it is a pandemic and a day did go over the budget, and we are having reduced revenue from businesses and individuals in terms of taxes. So I want to make sure that moving forward, that the nickname that I sometimes hear, you know, that we're felony way city, that that is our number one priority and that we prevent that from becoming commonplace, and that if we do spend our police's overtime, it's to prioritize our public safety and not get involved in any situations where we might be implicated in lawsuits due to decisions that other cities made, especially when they have a $432 million police department budget and we do not, and yet we still need to protect the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sai. Okay. Thank you. And now the letters.
Thomas can time you whenever he's ready. All right. The first one is from Mary Ales, and it reads, "To whom it may concern, I was more than distressed when I looked at the map for the O and M facility and what could potentially happen to Steel Lake Park. Granted, it is only one corner of the park, but it, but what is being proposed is totally inappropriate for any portion of that park. I've heard that you're looking at two other sites, Brook Lake and the old Target site, but not even having seen a map or proposal for either site, I would still be concerned. Even these two other sites mentioned have big issues due to their environmentally sensitivity, historical significance, and proximity to people. I'm aware that larger maintenance facilities needed in the land being looked at as owned by the city and therefore relieves them of that expense. Couldn't a less environmentally sensitive as well as historically connected to and well-used by our citizens be found? Anyone that has been in a portion of the Steel Lake Park after a rainy week knows that the grounds get saturated in the wetlands below the annex building and barn is where it all drains to. Yet according to your map and nature of this such, and nature of such a facility proposed to put salt brine bins, a covered fuel area, a sumped refuge area, a sign shop, paint, and untreated street storage, whatever that ends up being, at an environmentally sensitive site, one accidental spill of any of these substances would be one too many. If all slopes down into the wetlands area, and that's a barrier between the city-owned land and several senior living care facilities on the next street over, what about the loss of the skate park, skateboard park, and the softball fields? There always seems to be someone using them, and we can afford the loss, and can we afford the loss of any recreational spaces, especially at this time? It looks like the soccer field will still be there, but where's the parking? I'm not sure the playing in the middle of the maintenance yard would be very pleasing experience. Mixing large trucks and people, especially children, has never been a good idea either. This site has not only met the citizens' recreational needs over the years, but the Heritage Center building and the Little Barn are part of the history of Federal Way. We have already lost so many of the historic sites that were part of Federal Way that it could be so sad to see another legacy disregarded. As our population continues to grow, we can, can we afford to lose any current or potential parklands? All park and open spaceland must be protected as we will have great need for them in the near future. The citizens of Federal Way deserve better use of their land in this land than this plan proposes. Sites such as Steel Lake Park, Hailibos, Brook Lake, Camp Killworth, and Warehouse or Campus are historic, aesthetically pleasing, and unique to Federal Way. They can serve as a much-needed recreational, relaxing, and educational environments that should not even be considered for industrial or utilitarian use. These sites have and can continue to serve our youth and all the citizens of Federal Way as well as the people of South King, North Pierce County. Surely, a location can be found in Federal Way that has already been paved over and/or already serves a more industrial land use capacity that would better serve as a maintenance and operations facility the city needs. A concerned citizen, Mary Ales."
Okay. Is that, any other letters?
Yep, I have one more letter.
Okay.
This one is from Suzanne Vargo. It reads, "Mayor Farrell and city council members, regarding an O and M facility at Steel Lake Annex Park. My name is Suzanne Vargo, and she provides your address and phone number. I thank you for the opportunity to hear my concerns this evening. The mayor article August 15, 2020 stated, 'The layout images were prepared for the purposes of preliminary feasibility, but they're not intended to be a bias for basis for design or site selection. I understand this was a conceptual for staff to view along with two other sites.' Article stated that the city council requested that city officials look into other properties throughout the city. The city ordinance for receiving bids insists that there are three options to choose from. The previous statement suggests that the city did not provide any other bids via the bid process. The council found this to be unsatisfactory, hence asking the city officials to look into other properties. Were two other bids received, and did the council view them? It appears that the only Steel Lake is being considered. I'm at a loss for specifics to comment on, since I'm not wanting to waste time discussing items that are not relevant, as this is not an application. In past circumstances, the public comments once an application has been filed. Are the comments I present this evening being considered as comments to the actual application process? I would like to see more explanation and transparency of the bid process. I oppose the constructing of an operations and maintenance facility at Steel Lake Park Annex. This park is a historical and cultural setting that has served the public for over 120 years. To say one side of the park is widely used and the annex park is underutilized is not correct. I frequent the park often and often see skaters and soccer players. Skaters heavily use the park roughly from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. What data does the city have to support the statement that it's not, that the skate park is underutilized? The skate park was fought for by the youth of Federal Way. We need a safe place to practice their sport, and the city recognizes. Businesses suffer when kids have no place to call their own and storefronts become fair game. This is a subculture, a legitimate sport. It builds confidence and skill sets. This is why the park was built in the first place. How can you deny the youth their skate park? Where else will you have them go, the grand staircase? The city anticipates the soccer fields will not be affected, but since the conceptual image, this was not intended to be the basis of design, what will happen to the soccer fields? This annex park is a, is a viably economic center for the city. The Historical Society occupies the row house in the annex park. The Historical Society wishes to landmark this building and yet has to receive the city's permission. The mayor article states a Historical Society Heritage Center could remain. It's my desire to have the Heritage Center remain in the current setting. The barn should remain and receive landmark status as well. The openness of the park is essential for all, for our wandering visitors. We must see in order to serve our public. The integrity, integrity of the park must be preserved. The city wants to be a walkable city. How safe will the park be for youth, seniors, and residents as they attempt to navigate within an industrial area? How will the city protect the integrity of the watershed, the view shed with the annex park when storage containers will litter the landscape? It is the open spaces that bring about many health benefits of walking amongst trees and being outdoors. I fear a visit to the park could render one spirit void of the experience due to the lack of expansiveness and continuity." Highly, would you like me to finish, Mayor?
How much further? How much more?
Just another paragraph.
Okay, please do.
"A highly sensitive area in the wildlife the park supports must be preserved. It is the nature of the park that we find ourselves drawn to. The Redondo Mountain Aquifer runs directly through the annex park. Water quality and quantity is a responsibility of the city and shouldn't be taken lightly. Groundwater runoff should be detrimental to the surround, would be detrimental to the surrounding wetlands and lake. Fuel leaks could spell disaster for Steel Lake. Use of executive proposed Hailibos, Lakota Creek, and Joe's Creek Plan. I'm requesting a cumulative study of the entire Steel Lake area, traffic, and environmental. New developments on the northwest side of the lake and the O and M, and a new road being proposed triggers the need to be thoughtful in building out this already established portion of our city. Thank you for your time, Suzanne Vargo."
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Is that it for public comment?
Yes, Mayor, that's all I have signed up and all I've received.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be pulled for separate consideration. I'll read each of the items. 5A, minutes for the special meeting, July 28, 2020, regular and special meeting, August 11, 2020. B, vouchers, July 2020. C, monthly financial report, July 2020. D, surplus of public works and parks vehicles. E, purchase of tow behind truck loader leaf vacuum. F, amendment number one to goods and services agreement for abatement of unfit premises. Counsel, before I ask for a motion, would the, is there any council member who would want a separate item pulled for consideration? Okay, hearing none. Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of items A through F on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right. The matter's passed unanimously. Okay, public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. And this is with regard to item A, the Second Amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan. First, we're going to hear a staff report from Sarah Bridgford, our Community Services Manager, then public comment for three minutes each, then council discussion. Somebody needs to mute their...
I think it's...
What's that? Martin?
I think it's Council President Honda has a family in her house.
I think it was actually, sorry, I think it was actually Director Davis, so I muted him for you.
Oh.
Ah, very good. Okay.
There's some good talent.
Very good. Okay, Sarah, you're on.
Good evening. I will go ahead and share my screen, so give me just a second. So this evening, I will be, I should say, good evening there, Farrell and Council President Honda and members of the council. I am going to be presenting the Second Amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan. The policy question before you is should city council approve the Second Amendment to the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan? The city has received approximately $432,000 in CDBG funding specifically to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. Additionally, we are able to use some flexibilities with our program year 2019 and 2020 funding. This gives us an opportunity to do additional public services, things like rent assistance that's before you this evening. These funds have been allocated, that if projects are delayed or not possible due to COVID-19 or for other reasons, we can then reallocate those, those funds again, like we're doing this evening with the $300,000. As with all CDBG funds, they must support low and moderate income residents, and the CB funds specifically, or the use of any of the flexibilities, will require additional documentation, including a connection to COVID-19. So this is, just to give you a little bit of scope of the potential issues around rent and rent debt, and then the potential housing crisis that we're facing. So it is estimated that between 5% and 10% of households have not been able to pay all or a portion of their rent since, since April, and that's each month. The Census Bureau and the Washington Multifamily Housing Association both collect different data around the, the rent and past year rent. That data wasn't available yet for August. But what I would say is that we do anticipate that the percentage may go up in August and beyond, because that $600 unemployment benefit ended in July. So we do anticipate that that will create another financial hardship for households moving forward unless something else becomes available. So with housing and COVID, the eviction moratorium was extended through October 15. Additionally, we anticipate that there may be either national or state level action, something similar to the eviction moratorium or other, other steps put in place. But this does not alleviate the importance of housing stability nor the complexity that COVID-19 adds to that importance. The eviction moratoria do not alleviate rent debt. They delay, but do not prevent eviction. It also doesn't mean that a household that has potentially thousands of dollars in rent arrears is not stressed out about that. So that's another complexity as we look at COVID-19 and its impact on mental health and general household wellness. So one thing that I would just say is that when we look at the amount of rent debt, and I kind of glossed over that on that last slide, if we look at our average rent, we anticipate that about $5 to $10 million in past year rent is due in Federal Way. You will hear that additional programs are coming on board, so looking at like King County, the Multi Service Center, and others. And even though some of those programs have a fairly large investment in rent assistance, we know that it will not be enough to cover the need. Some have different eligibility. This funding would be able to layer with that funding and serve additional Federal Way households. We know that in addition to keeping households housed now, there are also longer term impacts to providing rent assistance, which includes the reduction of rent debt that can improve the financial and household stability into the future, impacting again recovery for, for our residents. The process for this recommendation, it went through the Human Services Commission on August 17. They voted unanimously to recommend that city council allocate an additional $300,000 in CDBG rental assistance. The funding comes from three different places. It includes $200,000 that had been included for a planned micro enterprise project. As the city implemented a larger, broader program, and there were issues with the CDBG funds around underwriting and admin that made it cost prohibitive, those funds are now available. Some funding is available through planning and administration that was budgeted with the CB funds. We can recoup those costs with our 2020 allocation. In looking at the budget, we're at a place where we don't need those additional funds for that. And then finally, the housing repair program will have some additional funding. We're still operating that program and accepting applications. The $81,000 will not impact our ability to serve low-income homeowners in Federal Way. So ultimately, the recommendation is to add $300,000 to the Multi Service Centers Rental Assistance Program responding to COVID-19. They had submitted a competitive application for the First Amendment because of duplication of benefits requirements with the CDBG CB funds. We would be able to only use one provider for rental assistance, hence that recommendation to add additional funding to their program. So for a timeline, the commission considered this on August 17. Our public comment period opened on August 26. It's before you this evening. And if approved by city council, I would hope, probably with an abundance of optimism, that we might have had... And if approved by city council, I would hope, probably with an abundance of optimism, that we might have had approval by September 15th. And I would be happy to take any questions after comment.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. All right, are there any citizen comments, public comments?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
Okay, council discussion, any questions by the council? Look to see. Um, Councilmember Sephedos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for this, um, presentation. And I would like to also thank the Human Services Commission for the hard work and for their, uh, recommendation. And this is really scary, um, the $300,000 is not going to help a lot. But we do know that there's other funding sources for people to access. So my questions are, um, several fold. One is, um, multi-service center currently has, uh, where you call them the first, the first day of the month, between certain hours. Where you're either waiting or you don't get served. So is this going to be a different service delivery where they are available different times of the week? Or is it going to be, um, the same, um, schedule or timeline that they have? And then secondly, how do people know about it? And how do they, um, how do they, yeah, how do they know to call MSC for rental assistance? And then is there also a limit to how much they can get?
Yes, uh, all, all good questions. So I will start, I'm pulling up information as I speak, but I will start with how we're going to be promoting it. The multi-service center is promoting it already. Um, two on one will, there is a brief pause right now in, in the, their existing program. Uh, just as they get caught up and go through the eligibility with, with households. We will put it out on Facebook and send it out with the community services listserv, similar to what we did with the King County program. That is open right now, so we encourage people to seek that assistance as well. Um, and then, you know, we, we invite people to share it in, in other ways. It's, it's definitely necessary to get the word out in, in multiple, uh, multiple avenues. There is an online application now, which is one different thing. I was thinking that there was, but I didn't want to miss, misspeak, so I did confirm that. Uh, the multi-service center is taking online applications. Um, and we will be, I, I think they're supposed to reopen again this week, so we'll get that on the Facebook and send it out to council directly as well. Um, they are trying to, uh, work with other partners. So the Federal Way Black Collective is one of those partners that they have identified. Where, uh, they're working with them to have different avenues of reaching into the community as well. Uh, we'll be doing promotion with our nonprofit partners to make them aware of the expanded service. Um, and then, I'm missing one of your questions.
Oh, I forgot, oh, um, is there a cap? To how much a family can get?
Yes, uh, so there is a cap, CDPG has different provisions. And, um, the regulations, the regular regulations would actually say that we can provide up to three months of, of rent assistance. Which is, um, a, a nice benefit, especially looking at COVID-19. CDPG also requires what we call resolution, meaning that a household has to have a way to pay the next month's, or an anticipated way to pay the next month's, um, rent. So they have employment, they have something that shows that they have that resolution. So this will hopefully prevent that eviction. Um, so the three month cap is what we're likely to stick with. The waiver that came out in August after this had started does allow for a longer term, uh, rent assistance, up to six months. Uh, but looking at the scope of the need and trying to balance how many households are facing, um, you know, potentially going to be facing eviction. At, at this point, it sounds like the three months is more in alignment with the multi-service center and also the scope of our program.
Thank you, and, um, a big concern, of course, uh, we always talk about this, is how we get this information out to people who speak other languages, who don't read English at all. Um, reaching them is very important. And, uh, could we also put this on our website where people who have access to internet will see it? But I'm still concerned about language barriers and also not having access to the internet. Because a lot of our, um, low income residents used to go to the library to use the, to, um, have access to the internet. So that also concerns me if they're using internet. I mean, it gives people with access to internet an unfair advantage, um, to accessing resources. And people who don't speak the language also, um, have a, an unfair advantage. So, um, finding a way to balance those, um, also would be very critical. But thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, and we will continue to have discussions on how to, how to do that. I, I know one thing that we've learned is having, uh, text for the resource, not just a PDF or an image file. So that our translation, uh, while it might be imperfect on the website, uh, it is helpful to have that translation available. Versus, you know, PDF document that might not be accessible then. So we'll, uh, look at those different modalities, two on one walls of the program information as well.
Okay, are, any other questions, council? Okay, um, seeing none, uh, thank you. Um, and, um, let's see, we asked for public comment. Councilwoman Cochmar, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, there's been a, been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion about closing the public hearing? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that, that opposed, that, uh, passes unanimously. Councilwoman Cochmar, do you have another motion?
Thank you, Mayor, I move approval of the proposed second amendment to the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, CDPG Annual Action Plan. And authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents to implement the plan and the corresponding funding agreements with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and sub recipients.
Second.
Just, okay, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, uh, uh, while I definitely support this measure wholeheartedly, uh, I do sit on the board of directors for the multi-service center. Um, and so I'll be reducing myself for this.
All right, uh, the record will so reflect. Okay, any other, um, any other, uh, comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, and one abstention, all right, thank you very much. Uh, it, it, uh, it is approved unanimously with one abstention. Okay, moving on to item number seven, council business. Uh, item A, senior advisory commission appointments. Council President Honda.
Thank you. So this evening, starting at five o'clock, the city council met on Zoom with several, uh, folks who have applied to be on our commissions. One of the commissions that we interviewed for is a senior advisory commission. And that commission is a commission that I help, uh, work with and, as well as Jerry Lynn Clark. It's been quite an honor to work with this commission. They are just entering their second year and they've done a lot of great work over this, the first year. So it is, uh, with great pleasure that I nominate Donna Williams to a voting position with a term to expire August 31st, 2023. Frank Fields to a voting position with a term to expire August 31st, 2023. Sue Ellebrecht to a voting position with a term to expire August 31st, 2023. And Kenneth Pratt to an alternate position with a term to expire August 31st, 2023.
Okay, uh, and is that in the form of a motion?
That is, I did say I moved, didn't, uh, yes, it is, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, uh, uh, as set forth by, um, uh, the council president. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, item B, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission Appointments. Uh, Councilmember Cochmar.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to appoint Gary Rich as a voting member of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2023.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously, congratulations. Item C, Arts Commission Appointment, Councilmember Cochmar.
Thank you, I move to appoint Shelley Cho as an alternate member of the Arts Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Once again, passes unanimously, thank you. Item D, Youth Commission Reappointments, Councilmember Cochmar.
I move to reappoint the following individuals. Amy, uh, apologize for mispronouncing the name, Oji Baro, Oji Baro. Nick Pagliocco, Daniel Chung, Iris Hamilton, and Kita Sharma. Samuel Lee, by extending their terms to expire August 31st, 2021, and to advertise for new applicants.
All right, is there a, a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. All right, congratulations. Item E, lease of old Target parking lot to Fred Hutchinson Cancer Center Re, uh, Research Center. Uh, first we'll have a staff report from Autumn Gresset, our community relations liaison, uh, with the PAC.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council President. Um, let me just share my screen here really quickly with you guys so I can pull up this presentation. Can you all see my screen here?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, so the matter before you tonight is in regards to the Fred Hutchinson Cancer Research Center lease of the old Target parking lot. Um, the policy question is, should the city council approve the lease of a portion of the former Target property to Fred Hutchinson Cancer Research Center? With the mayor's option being, or mayor's recommendation being option one. The history of this is that Fred Hutch and U Dub, um, Vaccine Trials Unit has a main location in downtown Seattle. They will be conducting efficacy studies looking at vaccines to prevent COVID-19. This site will be part of their goal to expand COVID research in additional areas and reach the federal way residence. Financial impact for this lease is that Fred Hutchinson Cancer Research Center will pay the city of federal way $1,000 per month for lease of this space. And then here you will see the site location. So currently where it is mapped out is in the blue section here, which is, um, closest to the sparecase side of the parking lot. And then this, just as a note to council, while you guys are looking at this, may change just slightly once their, um, semi-permanent trailers are on site. And we will give an updated, um, location of those once that is in place, should the lease be approved. And then I am happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, are there any, second. Council, are there any questions? I see, uh, Councilmember Sephedos.
Actually, um, I don't have a question, I think I forgot to lower my hand, but I do appreciate the presentation. I do appreciate, um, the fact that they're considering federal way for this project, so, um, I support it anyway.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council President Honda.
Uh, thank you. How long do they intend to lease the parking space? The parking lot?
The current lease is slated for one year, um, with the potential that it may end sooner than that, depending on if vaccine studies end sooner than that. But ideally, one full year.
What exactly will they be doing at the site?
Um, specifically, this site would, um, include educational screening visits, vaccination visits and follow-up visits to check on participants' health.
So in the next year, it may be possible that the PAC reopen. In fact, we really do hope that the PAC reopens within the next year.
We hope that as well.
And, uh, we use it. I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we need every parking spot available, uh, and we, we know that we have limited parking there as it is. How could this affect, how could this affect that?
So traditionally, even when the Performing Arts and Events Center is at capacity, which is 716 seats, um, in that theater. We do experience some overflow into that Target parking lot. Um, I would say more often than not, citizens just choose to take up some of that parking lot because of the distance or close proximity that it is to our front doors. But our parking lot, which, um, was built for the PAC, holds just enough cars. And also when we walked through with Fred Hutch, we anticipate that only about half of that blue space will actually be taken up Monday through Friday, sort of eight to five. We'll still have parking spaces available, um, that during business hours and such might be utilized by their patients and/or follow-up, um, type stuff. So we'll still have access to that in the evenings on the weekends and can be a good shared space.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, well, as long as it'll work, um, you know, we're certainly hoping that the PAC gets opened well before a year and that we have, um, those parking spots full of people attending events there. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, um. Autumn, um, how did the $1,000 get negotiated? How did that come to be? Why that number?
Um, that number is based off of negotiation with Fred Re, Fred Hutch Research and what they have available in regards to the budget for this vaccine study. Um, you know, obviously, a lot of studies are coming about and, and budgets aren't as large as we'd like them to be. And so it was kind of a, um, mutual where we, they would be able to land with their budget.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and I see, uh, Councilmember Cochmar.
Thank you, Mayor, I, you know, it's fabulous, I'm really happy that they're choosing us. Uh, you know, we have one of the one, we have one of the 100 best hospitals in the nation. We have, uh, Children's Hospital has a clinic here. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we talked to Fred Hutch about having a permanent relationship with our city? Just putting a, a bee in your bonnet.
Yeah, uh, that'd be great, thank you very much. Okay, uh, Councilmember Brusso.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, just a quick question on, you mentioned trailers, so how big of trailers or what equipment and how many are they putting in?
They will be putting in, let me back up a slide here. So in this Fred Hutch designated area, if you look at the space closest to the old Target building there. They are anticipating four, um, like 20 by 60 trailers that would sit end to end along that curb site there.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're almost kind of like, uh, big ones they bring in with trailers and, and, you know, towed in and then backing down, right?
Correct, yeah, it'll be, it'll take about a week of setup time. So it's not just, you know, a, um, a small trailer, it is definitely a, a larger semi-permanent.
And their power requirements are going to be covered?
They do have power requirements, um, that is not something that I am currently working with them on. Should the lease agreement move forward, we will dive further into those details.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council President Honda.
Thank you, um. So, um, the utilities for the trailers, will they have water, bathroom access and power? Thanks for bringing that up, Greg.
Correct, yes, they will have all of those.
So who, who sets that up and who pays for that?
They will be covering those under their budget and they will work directly with the city to receive permitting and any of those needs.
So for the water, how would they, um, I don't build buildings, I don't know how this would work. But how would they get a water source to, to the trailers? Would that, where would that come from?
I don't have an exact answer for you, but I'm happy to circle back with Fred Hutch. I know that they have been working with other departments within the city and I can get you a more concrete answer on that.
Council, uh, President Honda, I may be able to interject here. They will work, uh, directly with Lake Haven, probably accessing off of the, uh, current fire hydrants that are there. We met with them on site and, uh, they, they will be, their responsibility, as Autumn mentioned, to work with Lake to work with Lake Haven and PSE for their power needs and sewer needs.
Okay, sounds good, and seeing that we are currently leasing part of the parking lot to Waste Management, does this rental rate of a thousand dollars a month equal pretty much what we have been charging Waste Management to use?
It is a different rental rate, but the space allotted for Fred Hutch is also less than the space allotted for Waste Management.
Is it in any way comparable, so that one isn't getting a better deal than another?
I can go back and look at the exact square footage for you and get you a detailed answer.
I just want to make sure that, I don't have an issue with doing this, I just want to make sure that we're being as fair to those who want to use this space as others, so...
Absolutely, agreed.
Thank you.
Jeff? Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Sure, I move to approve the proposed agreement and to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the matter passes unanimously. All right, now moving on to item eight, ordinances, these are first reading, item A, Council Bill seven-eight-six, Advanced Travel Expense Fund Ordinance, first we'll have a staff report from Aday, our Aday, our ruler, our finance director, then citizen comment, then council discussion. So, Aday, the floor is yours.
Yeah, good evening Mayor, Council President Honda, what we're doing is free motor house cleaning. Even before the city was established, and before we established this in nineteen-ninety, the state allow individual cities to have advanced travel fund, so that in those days, when somebody was going out of town and they didn't have money of their own, the city or the entity will give that individual a check or a cash to be able to pay for the hotel, rent a car. With the use of credit card, and with the city having credit card that we easily give to the employees, there's no need for this fund anymore. And in trying to do some house cleaning, because we've now used these account since twenty-fifteen, I just don't want the city account sitting there without anybody looking at it, and with the kind of fraud that is happening today, you know, I'm, we're proposing that we need to close that account, we have credit card that we give to the employees when they're going out of town, that is part of why nobody has used it since twenty-fifteen. So, we will close that account and put the cash, ten thousand dollars, back into the general fund, and that is one account that I will not have to worry about being defrauded or whatever it is that is happening today.
Okay. Is that it?
That is it, I'll be glad to answer any question.
We'll do that in a moment, do we have any citizen comment, or any, any questions? Stephanie? All right, now, council discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, Councilmember Tran, excuse me, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill seven-eight-six, Advanced Travel Expense Fund Ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the Advanced Travel Expense Fund, repealing Federal Way Revised Code three dot five-zero dot zero-five-zero.
Okay, Councilmember Tran, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to September fifteen, twenty-twenty, council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, all those opposed? All right, the matter is unanimous, unanimous we passed. Okay, second reading and enactment, item B, Council Bill, thank you, Aday, item B, Council Bill seven-eight-four, relating to the extinguishing of a certain operation and easement agreement. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill seven-eight-four, relating to the extinguishing of a certain operation easement agreement, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, providing for the acquisition of certain property rights for the purpose of extinguishing that certain operation and easement agreement, recorded in King County, recording number eight-six-one-two-one-nine-four-five-nine-eight, as amended under recording number eight-seven-zero-four-zero-seven-one-two-seven-zero, as amended under recording number two-zero-zero-five-zero-seven-one-eight-zero-zero-zero-eight-three-eight, as amended under recording number two-zero-one-zero-one-two-two-two-zero-zero-zero-nine-three-six, and as amended under recording number two-zero-one-zero-one-two-two-two-zero-zero-zero-nine-three-seven, herein OEA, describing the public use and necessity of such property, directing staff to exhaust reasonable negotiation efforts to purchase such extinguishment rights, providing for the condemnation of the extinguishment rights, and directing the city attorney or designated outside legal counsel to initiate all necessary actions and proceedings in the manner provided by law for said condemnation if attempts to purchase said extinguishment rights are not successful.
Okay, Council President Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Matter passes unanimously, all right, item C, Council Bill seven-eight-five, Exnet Systems LLC Franchise, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill seven-eight-five, Exnet Systems LLC Franchise, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, granting Exnet Systems LLC its affiliate successors, and assigns a non-exclusive franchise to occupy the rights of Way in the City of Federal Way, Washington, within the specified franchise area for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, operating, replacing, and repairing a telecommunications network in, across, over, along, under, through, and below the City of Federal Way.
All right, Councilmember Berusso, do you have a motion?
The city, Ms. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the matter passes unanimously, all right, now we're on to council reports, Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, actually, I don't have anything to report on, this was a great meeting, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Berusso.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I want to thank again Mr. Sandoval, it's citizens like him that keep our city going, and I want to remind everyone too, that, you know, we always know that when fall season come, the leaves drop, that kind of thing happens, so clean the drains, I do it a lot, my place, please do that, help each other out, and make it great. The only other thing I want to say is thank you, I'm a little biased on this, but Diversity Commission, thank you for putting on the flavor, for continuing the vision that we had two years ago, and as I did also as a member there, job well done, thank you very much, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, they were great under your, under your leadership, and they continue to do so, so I was just bragging on the Diversity Commission the other day. All right, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any report to, to report, but I do have a kind of public service announcement, so I share this, Susan is laughing, so, I have shingles, the medical condition, right? So I don't know if I knew you have it, but I can tell you this, it's painful, it's horrible, it's, it's just unbelievable pain, so, my suggestion to you is this, if you are fifty or older, I know, Mayor, you're only forty, so that don't apply to you, but, go ahead.
I turn fifty-four at our next meeting.
Oh.
On, next meeting, so, yes.
So, so this apply to you then, you need to talk to your doctor and see if you can get that vaccine as soon as you can, I think the vaccine is available to people fifty or older, I highly recommend it, I regret it that I did not take up on the offer, my doctor offered me to take that vaccine probably four, five months ago, and I, you know, because I afraid of needles, I have, I have to admit, so I keep delay, and I keep telling her, no, no, maybe next time, well, I got it, so, please, get it, so, that's, that's all I have for now, thank you.
All right, all right, that is your, like, your public service announcement.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, all right, Councilmember Moore, you're on.
Well, on that note, I don't have to get the shingle shot, so I got a little bit of time, I think about, yeah, quite a bit of time, actually, so, while, Councilmember Tran, I hope you're, you're going a little bit better, that I know it's not an easy thing to deal with, so, good to see everybody, let's see, really just feeling grateful, feeling grateful for the Ukraine Day proclamation, Mr. Mayor, thank you, feeling grateful for ideas that have come out of this meeting, for the fact that, you know, you know, looking for opportunities to continue to engage with the public, especially with their dollars, clearly, even in the public comments, you saw some interest in that, and so I think this is a unique time that calls for greater attention on our part to engage with the public, so, enough said about that, so all I'm going to say is thank you for that, and I do want to connect with the chief and perhaps the mayor as well, because I do want to look into discussing and get a better understanding on the whole Seattle, and our police officers going over there, and whatnot, from the budget side, I'm in full understanding that we have an agreement in place, so that, that part, I'm fine with, but I just want to get a better understanding on our overtime budget, so, because I, I think, and the reason why is, I, I think when there's misinformation, it just becomes...
Right.
Frustrating.
We haven't gone up, we haven't gone up, we haven't gone up there in months, I mean, it's been probably about three months, we, you know, and obviously, during the entire time of the CHAP and the CHAZ, the CHOP and the CHAZ, we hadn't been up there, and, I mean, when we get a call, they, they think at, at, one of their precincts or their downtown, you know, police station is going to get overrun, we're going to go down there and help them, we're not going to let that happen.
And that's, exactly, and that's the agreement part that we have in place.
Yeah, they do it for us, yeah, we had thousands of people here trying to, trying to, you know, force their way into our, we're not going to let a neighbor police department get overrun, that's just not going to happen.
Sure, and I respect that, Mr. Mayor, so, so I, I'm looking forward to getting better understanding on the overtime aspect, so, other than that, yeah, a great meeting, and I'm looking forward to the next one, and I'm sure I'm forgetting something else, but, you know, yeah, I will say this part too, and I do want to thank Bill for all of his efforts, I know he's one man with so many different talents, and so I look forward to getting in touch with him to work with him on, on CARES Act Fund, and internet accessibility, and whatnot, I talked about that at the last meeting, but I do want to take the time to wish our students and scholars and our teachers, and all the school personnel, a good luck this, this school year, they're embarking on a historical journey, quite frankly, that they will always remember, and so, I know there's going to be a lot of challenges, I know there's going to be a lot of opportunities to hold our students accountable, you know, and so I'm looking forward to doing what I can to support all those efforts, and within the City of Federal Way, so, with that, I will end my report, thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, Councilmember Coachmore.
Thank you, Mayor, I have no report either, but I will pick up on Councilmember Tran's, I know shingles is terrible, it's an awful thing to have, but I hate to burst your bubble, the problem with the, with the shingle shot is it does not fully protect you a hundred percent, but, it does give you some protection, so it's better than nothing, and everyone over a certain age should get it, and also, when you're over a certain age, you be sure to go in and get your flu shot this year, but at the same time, ask if you can get a pneumonia shot, I have nurse friends who constantly tell me what to do, anyway, so just pass that on for, for good information, so, thank you, and Mayor, flu, shingles, and take care of yourself.
Yeah, here, here, I know, okay, thank you, Councilperson Honda.
Thank you, so I'm already unmuted, so, school starts next week for our students here in Federal Way, and I have two grandchildren who've already started school, and one in Renton, well, he starts tomorrow, and one in Iowa, and it is a difficult year for, for everyone, being at home, or even being on a hybrid system where you're going part-time and being at home part-time, but I did have the opportunity, just the other day, to to understand a little bit about what a family will go through having school at home, I had my seven-year-old grandson on his computer doing his schoolwork, watching a three-year-old and a six-month-old for two hours, and it was hard, it was really hard to, to help the seven-year-old and to take care of the other two, and so, I feel very strongly that if, if you're able to, to please help these families out, they're, they're going to need help, this is going to be a difficult time for everybody, and not only for the families, but for our staff, because the staff is working really hard to make this work for everybody, so that everyone can get the education that they need, so, so good luck to everyone, it'll work out, we're all in this together, we hear that all the time, but let's mean it, let's help out our neighbors and our friends when we can, and those with, with young families, because it wasn't very easy actually to keep the seven-year-old motivated, to keep working and chasing the other, the other two around, that, that was hard. I also want to encourage folks to visit the farmer's market that still is continuing here in Federal Way, Saturdays, nine to three, you must wear a mask unless you're medically unable to, and, you know, it's certainly not as big as it has been in the past, but we do have some great vendors there, and they would appreciate your support, and please wear a mask when you're out and about, we need to get COVID cut down, we need to get back to as normal as possible, stay six feet away from people if you're not wearing a mask, but please, if you're out and about, please wear a mask, good meeting tonight, it's good to see everybody, and have a great two weeks.
Here, here, all right, well, great meeting, everybody, thank you very much, remember to sign up for the litter, the Cleanup Federal Way event on September twelfth, I'd love to see you there, it'd be great, and thank you, everybody, I really had a great meeting tonight, got a lot accomplished, take care, bye-bye.
Mayor, is it September twelfth?
What's that?
September twelfth.
September twelfth.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's a Saturday, it's a Saturday.
Yes.
That's not the twelfth. It's the Saturday.
Um... Isn't it the twelfth?
It's not this Saturday.
No?
Right.
Not this Saturday, next Saturday.
It's not, it's the following Saturday.
Okay, sorry about that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, I don't think we could have gone the, okay.
I have it on both dates for some reason, but...
That's, I know, well, Susan and I had originally talked, I know, exactly, actually, Lydia, actually, Susan and I originally talked about having this on the fifth, and then we switched from the fifth to the twelfth, that's why you've got it on both dates.
Okay, no, yeah, remove it, thank you so much.
Now we've thoroughly confused everybody, all right, the twelfth, see you there.
September twelfth, nine o'clock at the PAC, be there.
All right, all right. Bye, guys, thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Bye. Good night.
Good night, everybody.